Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, July twenty seven, meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Milton, Massachusetts. On July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. The act does not make any new changes in to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. As such, all votes will be taken by roll call. All to order. My name is Arthur Doyle. I'm serving this year as Chair of U.S. Select Board. Could we have introductions from the other members of the board, please, starting with our Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair Doyle. Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Secretary?
Good well, Secretary.
Erin Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Thank you. And staffing our meeting today are?
Anne Marie Fagan, interim Town Administrator.
Lynn Denapley, Executive Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Thank you very much. With those introductions, should we all join together for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, we will move to Agenda Item Number Three, a public comment. Let's see if we have any hands raised. I do not see any. That being the case, double checking, that being the case, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion Approval, Selection of New Town Administrator for the Town of Milton, probably one of our most important responsibilities. At this point, I'd like to suggest, if you're willing, that we employ the sequence we used for the interviews this past week, and could use a process whereby a member of the Select Board identifies the candidate, a visitor of choice, and we have three finalists for the position. Nicholas J. Milano was the Assistant Town Administration, was Administrator in Medfield. Thomas M. Guarino, who's been the Town Administrator in Born, Massachusetts, and Melissa Goff, who's the Deputy Town Administrator for the Town of Brookline. If that's agreeable, members of the board may identify their candidate of choice and provide some comments, or provide some comments, and then identify their candidate of choice. And if we follow the same sequence we used in the interview process, Roxanne, may we please begin with you?
Okay, thank you. This candidate that I have chosen is someone who stressed transparency, who comes from a small-town background, and Milton is a town, so I did like that diverse experiences and a lot of energy, and I felt that this candidate would be the best fit for the town. So my choice is Nicholas Milano. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Musto. Ms. Bradley, may we turn to you, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to first thank the Selection Committee. They did an amazing job, and I actually really struggled between two candidates. However, the candidate I chose, to me, seemed to have the most enthusiastic ideas for moving our town forward, had experience in kind of making the website an easy thing for our town's residents to maneuver through, and they had really good answers for the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece that was really important for me. So with all that being said, after much consideration and debate in my own mind, I've gone with Nicholas Milano.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Zulus, I'm sorry, Ms. Wells, may we turn, let's see, what was that order? Mr. Zulus, then Mr. Wells, and then myself, Mr. Zulus, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize, I may go a little bit longer than the prior two speakers, just to kind of flesh out my thoughts on this, because, as you mentioned, when we consider the impact that the Town Administrator has on town government and on the residents, I believe that choosing the Town Administrator is the most important duty that we undertake on behalf of the town, and, you know, that duty deserves our highest attention, deliberation, and consideration. And while Mr., I think maybe Erin mentioned, the Screening Committee and Mr. Pavlicek, Mr. Pavlicek told us that the three candidates who were presented were capable and qualified, and that their qualifications made them worthy finalists, and I believe Mr. Pavlicek was correct. I believe each of the three candidates was well-qualified and capable, but I'm going to focus on two of the candidates. First, Melissa Goff, who spent the last sixteen years working in Brookline in the Select Board Office, the last seven as Deputy Town Administrator, and before that as Assistant Town Administrator. Prior to that, she was an analyst with the Budget Office in the City of Boston. So I think it's fair to say that Ms. Goff's greatest strength is in the area of budget and finance, and I think that is critical, a critical need in our town. Ms. Goff has been responsible for a three-hundred-and-eighty-three-million-dollar annual financial plan, a four-hundred-and-three-million-dollar six-year capital plan. She told us that working on, she works on budget and finance issues with many department heads and a thirty-member Advisory Committee. That's a bit different, I think, as Roxanne pointed out, than Milton in terms of size and scope and resources, but it's certainly critical and a critical skill for our next Town Administrator. She told us about her extensive experience in preparing Brookline's very-thick warrants on a biannual basis for town meeting, and again, that's an important skill for the next Town Administrator. And she talked about the importance of the team in town government and how bringing the team together, for example, when they prepared for the U.S. Open in Brookline. Terms of communication, she talked about consistency of message and the fact that Brookline had hired a community, a communications firm to help during COVID. So I think Ms. Goff is clearly an accomplished municipal professional who could add great value as Milton's Town Administrator. I would next like to just talk quickly about Nicholas Milano, who has spent the last three years as the Assistant Town Administrator, as Roxanne mentioned, in Medfield, and prior to that, he was the Chief of Staff to the Mayor Marlborough for four years. Similar to Ms. Goff, he was responsible for budget development in Marlborough, and soon after he left, Marlborough earned a triple-A bond rating, according to Mr. Milano's cover letter, and he has, in Medfield, directly led the budget preparation, and this is included, he told us, adjusting and changing the budget process, developing a five-year capital plan, and developing a comprehensive budget plan, along with updating financial policies. Also similar to Ms. Goff, Mr. Milano has worked in preparing the warrant for town meeting and attending all warrant committee meetings in Medfield. But I think, as Roxanne pointed out, it's important to note the difference between Brookline and the budgets in Brookline and the resources in Brookline, and the budgets and the resources in Marlborough, where the budget was one-hundred-and-sixty-two million and the budget in Medfield was about seventy-three million. Those are more similar to those in our town, as are the resources that will be available to the next Town Administrator. Mr. Milano has been successful in managing a budget in response to the structural financial challenges and near-total reliance on residential taxes in Medfield, and those things are strikingly similar to what we face in Milton. Housing is another critical challenge that we face in Milton. Mr. Milano gave us examples of leading the process of developing the former Medfield State Hospital into three-hundred-and-thirty-four housing units. He gave us an example of Milton, Medfield selling land to develop age-restricted housing. On school overcrowding, another issue that we're going to be, that we're facing and will face for the next few years, Mr. Milano gave us an example of leading a school building committee for a new elementary school in Marlborough, a project that, according to his cover letter again, a project that came in on time and under budget. His background also includes working for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, assisting on school consulting practices. In the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, as Erin pointed out, Mr. Milano cited the need for reaching out to all segments of our town, and he gave the example of the working on the town-funded lead service line replacement for Marlborough residents. And in the area of collective bargaining, which we haven't talked too much about, Mr. Milano's resume in his cover letter mentioned that he represented the mayor of Marlborough in collective bargaining negotiations and worked directly with union officials. And then, you know, Erin mentioned the area of communications, and I think Erin and Roxanne did as well, about Mr. Milano giving the example of updating the website and social media to make them more accessible and more informative. So I'm in the same place as Roxanne and Erin are on balance, I think, given his directly applicable experience with the challenges that Milton's going to be facing in the coming years. I think Mr. Milano was uniquely fitted for this moment in Milton, and he is the best choice to help Milton move forward in the coming years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zulus. Mr. Wells, may we turn to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to be twice as long as Mr. Zulus tonight. I'm only kidding. I, first off, I echo the comments of my colleagues on the board. As Michael especially knows, we sat on the Screening Committee together, so we had the benefit of interviewing all the candidates that came for us, and recommending the three finalists to you. I concur with his comments on Ms. Goff, and with regard to Ms. Milano, I kind of see it a little bit differently in that, how did I look at how he would fit into this role as the new Town Administrator? For me, I've been coming in that building, going back to the days of John Cronin, and for all of them that came forward, it takes courage to do what they did. It's not an easy thing to come into a community that you're not from and apply for the top executive position in government, and in that aspect, I give them all credit. And so from that, the way I looked at Mr. Milano came to the decision was, I thought to myself, how will the next Town Administrator fit in to the building at five-twenty-five, can that, how will he interact with the Clerk's Office, the Park, the Assessor, the DPW, the Planning, County Office? How will he hand or she handle the fulfilling the new Chief Financial Officer's position again? How do we do that? How will he interact with Chase, and King, and Chief Dan, and Christine, and Will, and all of the entities of this town? And much to what Roxanne said, he has some city experience, but he understands how a town works, and he understands how this town works. And I can see him, he reminds me very much, and I said this to someone today, when David Colton first came here, as our DP Democrat, and then subsequently became our Town Administrator, and did a tremendous job in the years he was there, and in the years that he went to other communities after he left here. I think that Mr. Milano possesses that same type of insight and skill. I think that he, his background is, Michael alluded to, the things that we're facing us now, from budget to communication to affordable housing, which is always first and, you know, front center for us in all the committees that deal with this issue in town. I think his expertise, the School Building Assistance Committee for years in the past, will help us in that process, and I just, I agree with all the others that, at this time, that he's the best person for the job, and I think that he will be very fortunate to have the guidance and expertise of Anne Marie when he arrives here. So in that, my two fingers. Again, just to conclude, I thank all the candidates, especially the finalists, who took the time and interest in our community to apply for this position. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, and I echo your closing comments. We are grateful to everybody involved, and also, of course, to our Steering Committee. For the sake of time, I will not enumerate the twenty-seven characteristics that I have for my candidate of choice, but I was very impressed with the emphasis on transparency, rather, and community unification, the importance of goal-setting and multi-year planning, the projection of a collaborative leadership style, identification, as was mentioned earlier, of similar community issues, perception of openness to ideas and to people, a thoroughness and specificity of responses without over-elaboration, a degree of comfort and a projection of ease with people, the value of mentoring, professional development, getting new voices into town government, economic development, exposure, and experience, and on I go. Importance of equity and diversity, and his referencing to low-income populations in that process. So I too join my colleagues in advocating the appointment of Mr. Nicholas Milano to serve as the next Town Administrator for the Town of Milton. With that said, we have unanimously chosen Mr. Milano, and I would entertain motion to approve Mr. Milano as the new Town Administrator for Milton, Massachusetts.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm prepared to read your motion. I move to approve, I move to approve Nicholas Milano as the new Town Administrator for Milton, Massachusetts.
And Mr. Wells, would you accept the amendment, subject to the execution of an employment agreement?
We can do that in fifteen minutes, Mr. Chair. We'll be done with the contract by seven forty-five. What, Mr. Zulus, I don't know. I'll accept that, Mr. Chair, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It has been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle? Yes. Congratulations to Mr. Nicholas Milano. For the sake of everybody who is watching, let me just catch a little bit of his background, some of which will be repetitive. He has currently served as Assistant Town Administrator for the Town of Medfield. His prior experience includes service as a senior policy analyst for the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, as executive aide to the mayor of Marlborough, Massachusetts, as project coordinator for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and as a legislative aide in Massachusetts. Mr. Milano earned his Bachelor of Arts cum laude from the Commonwealth Honors College at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and holds a Master of Urban Affairs degree from Boston University. He also earned a certificate in local government management and leadership sponsored by the Massachusetts Municipal Association in conjunction with Suffolk University. He is also a John Ward Fellow, a student at Boston Latin School. Please join in congratulating Mr. Nicholas Milano on his selection as the new Town Administrator for the Town of Milton. Turning to our agenda. As I shift papers, please bear with me for a moment. We now have, as item number five, executive session, item number six, executive session, item number seven, executive session. We will go into executive session for each of these agenda items, and following executive session, we will return to open meeting. I will save you by reading the motions to go into executive session, noting only after the third one that we will return to open session. First is executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Paragraph Twenty-One, Subsection A two, discussion strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new Town Administrator. I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new Town Administrator, based upon my belief that discussions of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. Agenda Item Number Six, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Paragraph Twenty-One, A six, to consider the purchase exchange lease of, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up, I need to take a roll after each of the motions. So that said, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Seeing no hands for comment, roll Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Ms. Musto, rather.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So it is unanimous, thank you. Executive session has been read. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of the Kitter Ranch Library, one oh one Blue Hills Parkway, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will return to open session following the third executive session. Is there a second to the motion?
I have a question. I just wanted to say something, Mr. Chair.
Please, Ms. Musto.
I'm going to be abstaining from this one.
Thank you for alluding us. We appreciate that. Without abstention, is there a second, please?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. It's a tie vote. Mr. Wells, you got it just under the wire. Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Paragraph Twenty-One, Subsections A three, discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, NVTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the NVTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Mass. Motion reads as follows. I move to enter into executive session to discuss- I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located on Adams Street, Milton, Mass, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. Following this executive session, the select board will adjourn from executive session and return to open session. Is there a motion, please? Then a second to the motion. Mrs. Zulus, thank you. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, one and all. May we now be prepared by Milton Access TV and staff for executive session?
Good evening, everyone. We are pleased to return from executive session to open session. We have as our next agenda item number eight. And it's identified as litigation against the Massachusetts Patriots Authority. That item will be deferred at the present time unless there is further discussion, Mr. Zulus.
Mr. Chair, is it possible to give an update on that?
Yes, it is, and you're most welcome to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Many years ago, longer than anyone can remember, and well before the beginning of the Baker administration, the stairs that provide the access to the Milton's MBTA station fell into disrepair, became dangerous, and were closed by the MBTA. Over the past seven and a half years of the Baker administration, nothing, not one thing, has been done by the MBTA to fix this hazard and reopen the stairs. And not only does the MBTA admit that this is a danger, it is a blight on our town, it is an eyesore, and it is an impediment to commuters. All this because the MBTA has neglected its responsibility. We have tried over and over again to remind the MBTA and the Baker administration of its responsibility. There have been letters from state reps, including Representative Driscoll, Senator Timmeltie, and I, and the former town administrator met with Mr. Poftak, the MBTA's general manager, back in January 2020, to implore them to remedy this. There have been follow-ups over the last two years. And finally, last December, Town Council sent a letter to the MBTA's general manager demanding that this be done, the staircase be repaired, the hazard be remedied, and the stairs be reopened. And the MBTA has not responded to that. So the town, I think, has very little choice but to consider what actions it might take going forward. And I think it's important for us to think about what actions we need to take going forward because nothing else has seemed to work at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, very much. We now turn to agenda item number nine. And we ask Board of Health Director Caroline Kinsella to address a COVID-19 update, please. Caroline, can you hear us okay? Good, you're off mute. Good to see you again. Welcome to the meeting. And thank you for your willingness to provide a COVID-19 update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and select board members. I'm gonna give a COVID update, what we're seeing in the Health Department right now. So right now in the Health Department, we're observing an average of less than 10 cases of lab-confirmed cases daily over the last three to four weeks. So that's good news. We're averaging on Sunday, we had three cases, Monday two, and seven yesterday. Eighty-three residents tested COVID-19 positive out of 960 tests administered in the last two weeks. And presently, the 14-day percent positivity in Milton is 8.65. And the state is now posting weekly updates on the data as opposed to daily updates. And what we're seeing is most prevalent, the subvariant, is the Omicron B.5. So statewide, comparably, is 8.16 for a 7-day percent positivity. And statewide at Milton, we're seeing cases mostly between 20 and 50. And I did get a report from Alex Campbell, he is the infection control nurse over at BID Milton Hospital. He reported that overall numbers have been relatively flat for about the last month, or they've come down. And BID Milton Hospital is averaging about six inpatients daily, and about four staff members are out at any given time. And that's my COVID report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Caroline on the COVID report, please? Seeing none, we'll return to the agenda. Item number 10, discussion approval. Intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence Grant awarded to the Norfolk County Eight Local Public Health Coalition, Norwood, Canton, Dedham, Milton, Needham, Wellesley, Walpole, and Westwood. Caroline, the floor issue us.
Oh, sorry, I was gonna make the motion, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Caroline, I apologize.
Thank you. I just have a quick synopsis.
Excuse me? One quick second? I had my hand up. I'm abstaining from this one, Arthur.
I should have asked you that, and I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the Public Health Excellence Shared Service Grant is designed to support the Special Commission on Local and Regional Public Health recommendations for improved effectiveness, efficiency, and equity of local and regional public health by expanding opportunities for the sharing of public health services. The Public Health Excellence Grants have been awarded to 310 communities out of 351 communities. And Milton is a member of Norfolk County Eight. And we work with the local health departments, including the Dedham, Canton, Needham, Norwood, Walpole, Wellesley, and Westwood. So we have monthly meetings, and we discuss what's going on in our communities, explore grant opportunities. And this NCA coalition has been in existence for more than 10 years. So this grant, Norwood is the fiscal agent of the Public Health Excellence Grant, and they have the lead municipality. And Norwood has hired five staff, they've hired two epidemiologists, a community resource specialist, and two regional public health associates. And right now, we are very happy to have the two epidemiologists helping us gather data for our community health assessment. So they're giving five hours each of their time through the whole year and working with Laurie Stillman, our program director for the community health assessment. So we're very appreciative of all their knowledge and all their data collections. So this grant is for a total of three years, $299,971 over a three-year period, so almost $1 million. And the renewal options are through 6/30/2033. So this is fantastic news for public health because this is additional support for all the public health departments. And it's really great that they're gonna be supporting and strengthening the delivery of public health services and preventative measures in the communities. And I'd like your support of this inter-agency agreement between all of our eight partners at NC Eight that we have joined, and we've been working with them for many, many years. So strengthening the public health infrastructure throughout the Commonwealth, really.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Mr. Wells, were you about to make a motion?
Thank you, Caroline. Who would have ever thought when you started this job, this was the path you were going to take? God, you used to be a portal with like, I don't know, small things happened, like just this is... So thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the Public Health Excellence Grant to the Norfolk County Public Health Coalition and authorize the interim town administrator to sign the agreement on the board's behalf.
Is there a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any comments or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Absolutely.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Bestow?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Doyle? Yes. Congratulations, Caroline. One notation, reviewing the documents for this meeting, I just wanted to note that the participants agreement form should have a change made from Mr. Dennehy, the former town administrator.
Well done. Thank you so much for your support. I really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate the efforts that you put into this. It doesn't just happen, so.
Take a vacation, Caroline.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11, discussion approval, conveyance of 41 War Street to the town of Milton, Massachusetts. Mr. Wells, did you want to make any introductory comments before we go to Mr. Freitag?
I think I know where I'm at on this. I'll let Town Council speak, I think we're there.
Hi, Kevin. I know you've worked on this for years.
It's true. Good evening, members of the select board. Kevin Freitag from the Officer Town Council. Relates to the conveyance of 41 to the town. There are a number of pieces to this. I'm gonna sort of lay it all out for you. There are questions between the town, the association, 88 War Street. For, you know, months back in 2020, eventually led to was a memorandum before you, your materials, that was executed on August 11th of 2001. And that set forth what we're going to do in terms of getting permission by the select board from town to purchase this and to accept this property, and also for it to be authorized by one of its members to convey the property. It also, memorandum of agreement set forth that paying the town a gift... paying the town a gift of $1,000 over the course of five years, would be a gift to the town, used for purposes, the property, use of any, use the funds for any expenses that the town might incur in relation to their environmental concerns with the property. And the agreement also set forth some orders regarding cooperation between to allow for the Association some special permits that it issued that took place of 88 War Street. Actually, all things have now happened. In 2021, the select board was authored by, I believe, it was 89% of the vote to purchase this property. During the 88 War Street, have now also voted to the town along with the gift of $75,000 to the town. So I've been to work with the Associations. We developed a First Amendment, which you have in front of the memorandum of agreement, which provides, sort of, if you will, sort of, the next steps, what's left here as the property is conveyed. A couple of things that will that the town essentially...
Kevin, if I may for a minute, I don't know if others are sensing a bit of breaking up. I see some heads nodding in the affirmative.
I'm sorry.
Something you could maybe move in, or something of that nature, like you've just done, to see if that ends it. We want to hear every word you have to say to us.
Better, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Why don't you try and see if it still breaks up?
I can switch the... Can you hear me now? Is that better?
It appears to be. Thank you.
So what you have before you now, tonight's amendment to the memorandum of agreement, and what that does is and what are really the facts in this process of conveying this property to the... And that'll include the following. It'd include the ones that a D. The Association on War Street to the town, that the town is gonna have number of abilities related to that. First, it takes responsibilities under what is Chapter 91 license, which is the Mass Department of Environmental in relation to these better owed parcels being 25 and which town parcels in what, right, and thing that are the obligations holder. All of those things this town are doing now in relation to the other properties down there, or will be able to bowl of performing. I have spoken to Bill Ritchie about these items. They're aware of the license, they're aware of, also, Winsky obligations under the Chapter 90, and Chase Berkeley, and Bill will likely be coming to the select board in not-too-distant future of potential capital, I need some attention at 41 Wall Street. So they are very much aware of the condition of the property and what resources will be made, need to be made available to maintain them, and also aware that they will be now making these parcels, particularly 25, where the yacht club is located. There's a, there's a, it's public, but at this point, 88 War Street has been maintaining that part and keeping that grass cut, and we're no longer the case, so that will switch over to TB. Or, excuse me, Chase Berkeley is aware. We've done, as I think I've ever given you, to make this a smooth trend in the management and control of the property. In terms of provisions of this memorandum of agreement, I just pointed out, right now, the yacht club toilet that are currently pumped into a captain that is maintained by 88 War Street, and from the catch basin, the hill up to Adams system tie-in that's there. What the town is agreeing to do here is that unless written agreement on the War Street from the Association, another bathroom or a sink down there in the yacht. The concern here is volume, that system apparent is War Street's system. City, and so 88 War Street doesn't want into the system than we currently are. To be very clear, this doesn't prevent the town from something else down there. Putting down more at some point, it just can't do so within the War Street system without its permission. So I just wanted to put that out. So a concern quickly regarding the lights of lights, streetlights from 85.
Avenue is breaking up again. I'm sorry.
Sorry. There are street lamps that are on 25 Wall. The town is taking over the, excuse me, on the 21. There are street lamps. It's now a responsibility for all the streets that are on property to the extent, and I believe that there were two lamps that are streets property that were tied into that system. These lamps are gonna be disconnected, and there will be 88 War Street. So, yeah, there'll be a clear cut and clean break with 88 guarding costs and responsibility. So now, that which is on the town's property will be the town's responsible forward. Also, with just in this memorandum of agreement, the Association is presenting as good title to the property. We actually had a title a title examiner, and has, and I have that report, which shows that 88 War has good title, and that they can actually come to us. The town, at this point, buying any title insurance, which some of you are familiar with title insurance, you often see where here, the town actually is not paying. There wouldn't be much to return to purchase price, but it's something that the town wanted to consider that down the road. The discussion, but I've seen and the 88 War Street has good title to convey. So that's, that's all in good order. That memorandum of agreement is for your consideration, and hopefully, tonight. Once you've approved that memorandum of agreement, the Association is also considering today, and he confident that the Association would accept the memorandum of agreement. He thought he'd have it. Fortunately, he hasn't been able to provide that to me yet. If the select board executes it, and the trust, the Association, then the next thing that will happen will be sometime early next week. The Association will execute the deed in favor pursuant to a meeting vote. It's nominal duration, which in this case is $1. The deed will transfer complete chip of bringing control of the property to the town. The three, if you're weeds, but there are three easements right now, one all in favor of the town extinguished because the town will now retire, so we'll have complete control same time that I meet with Ned to get the deed executed. By Ned, I mean Attorney Constable. They'll also for payment of gift, about a $75,000. They'll make the first for $15,000. That money is going to be given, so this doesn't go into the general fund. It's gift account specifically, where used for a specific purpose. The interest, stay with the money, it'll stay in lessened until it's used by the town. Only exception to that is that I included some later, worked on the gift letter with the, so again, that was suggestion made to me long ago by us, which is that you include a sort of an escape hatch in case for the purpose for which this is no longer possible. Like, if sold off this land, let's say, then the select board would be able to say, well, we can't fund for the land anymore because we don't know. We use them for, the gift letter says, use select board for a purpose which the select seems to be in the best interest of the town. So again, it's all of our Ts and dotted Is, got this thing buttoned up. As Richard said, we've, I think we've been since, as long as I've been, it's been about five years in November. So it's been quite a long road. And those are, that's the memorandum of agreement that's due. We discussed the Chapter 90, since that's referenced in the memorandum of agreement. We're gonna be fully for those obligations. Thing you don't touch is there's a fee that's been owed, and the, that's actually not our fee, that's the Association's fee. They're gonna continue to pay that. It's owed. It's not our responsibility. We talked about the gift and, oh, last, with Paige Appolito, last week, put on notice that we'd be required. And the response we got back was, is the property is conveyed to the town. It's under the town's general liability insurance policy that we have at Maya. You know, like in any other property, the town, somebody were to go down there and trip and fall or get hurt, anything like that, there would be, you know, there would be billi, insurance that would be in place as soon as we take. So I know that that's, that's a lot to condense as much as I could, I'm sure. But there's, there are quite a there, so happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Extremely thorough. And we're very grateful for the work that you've done over an extended period of time in collaboration with Attorney Corcoran and others to get us to where we are today. My only observation that passed along from reading the documents was to ask if you could please take a look at the deed. The execution date of the deed may need to be updated.
Yes. I bought, thank you, I actually picked that up this afternoon after this to you, the date on the so the considerer deed, which says $10 and the $1.
Are there any questions for Mr. Freitag? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus, I see your hand, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the amendment, the First Amendment is fine. What I think needs to be corrected is the letter about the gift, or the $75,000. The intention for the $75,000 was to create a fund to mitigate against any potential environmental concerns because there was not a Phase Two environmental assessment done. So, so I, and we did not include in the memorandum of agreement that specific purpose because they didn't want us to. We just said it was a gift, it was, the amount would be put into a fund. But to say in the letter that it can be used for maintenance and repair or improvements, that's not what was intended. So I'm, I'm fine saying it's in the discretion of the select board because that's what we agreed. But the intention was to mitigate potential environmental, environmental problems because we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't do a Fight Phase Two. They didn't want to do a Phase Two. And we determined, and town meeting agreed, that balancing the risk, which is not, not, not very high against the $75,000, that would be, that would be, that would give us some mitigation of that potential risk.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Mr. Freitag responds?
Point is very well taken. And I included in the language made for mediation, in an attempt to capture, but if the, yeah, the board's will here is that it be made more specific and narrower and only for the use to mitigate potential environmental abilities or risks, I'm happy to change right now.
Mrs. Zulus, I just want to comment, and recognizing Mr. Zulus, that my recollection is identical to that of Mr. Zulus.
And I don't think, based on the discussions before, and what we talked about in the amendment, I don't think we need to be that specific, right? Ultimately, it's the discretion of the board, but I don't think it's appropriate to... So, so the intention of the board from two years ago, and up through town meeting, was to mitigate environmental risk. Maybe there'll be some, something occurs in the future that will, that will result in us not having to do it. Maybe some board in the future will not see that potential. But, but, so, so I don't mind just saying it's in the discretion of the board, period, right? Without saying the specific, I don't think it's appropriate to put in the things that were not intended by the board, if you can, if you see the distinction there. I don't mind keeping it general. I just don't want, I just don't want things in there that were not intended.
Mr. Wells, who are you guys?
So I, Mr. Zulus is correct. I, I don't, there was one caveat to that, and this is what my suggestion would be. I would say within the next five years, whatever is going to happen here will happen. I think we're gonna see the dredging next year. I think any, the next will be the upgrade of the ramp. So to Mr. Zulus's point, town meeting did approve in 2019, I believe, the landing revolving fund for all funds coming from down there to go. I think that maybe, and you can word this how you want, Michael, I think that perhaps we, as we collect this $75,000 for the next five years, that that money be kept for any mitigation that takes place during this work that's done down there. And when the work is done, if it's not needed, then at that point, we roll that money right into the fund that it was intended for. And to Michael's point, you know, to use at the discretion of all, which is the landing revolving fund was created for.
Thank you.
I probably didn't word that correct, but I think Michael most would go with that.
Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, you know, my understanding is that we're gonna keep it segregated. And maybe there'll be an issue in five years, maybe there'll be an issue in seven years, maybe some board will decide, and one of the boards will decide in five years, that the risk is lessened. I don't know that that's gonna be the case. I don't know that the risk will be lessened in five years. So I just think we should do what we intended, say that it can be used in the discretion of the board, but we're gonna keep it separate. And some of us will remember, and it'll be in the minutes, and it'll be, it can be referenced, that the intention when we did this.
I get that. I guess, I agree with you on that, but I don't, I don't remember anything about it being separate. I, I don't recall anything, any direction ever, but of being kept in a separate town.
It was intended to be a separate fund.
Okay, with those clarifications to be made, is there a motion to approve conveyance of 41 Wall Street to the Town of Milton?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to...
Mr. Freitag asked to adjust us.
The email that I sent you, Mr. Chair, there are three votes. There's just a sequence of three votes, and I would just approve the MOA to approve the conveyance of the property to the town on this town council to take next steps, step to the end of the property.
I have that memorandum, and does it, does everybody have it?
I have a motion prepared, Mr. Reed, Mr. Chair. Mine is different, but I could just insert Town Council's line, which to what he just stated.
Maybe I can help with respect to what Mr. Freitag has mentioned with respect to the three motions, and I'll read the first motion. I move in accordance with the authorization provided to the select board by the vote of town meeting on the Paper Corporeal Way, Article One of the October 2022 Special Town Meeting. We haven't had an October 20 to Special Town Meeting, Mr. Freitag.
It was 21, Mr. Chair. Over 21.
Yeah. Special Town Meeting, that the select board approved and executed the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between select board and Milton Landing Fund of Medium Association by and through its board of trustees, did August 21, 2021.
Is that a motion you just made, Mr. Chair? That was, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Vote number two. I'll read the motion. I move in accordance with the authorization provided to the select board by the vote of town meeting on Article One of the October 2021 Special Town Meeting, that the select board approved the conveyance of 41 Wall Street to the that the select board approved the conveyance of forty-one Wall Street to the town of Milton as set forth in the deed provided by town council. Any questions for town council on this? Okay, seconded by Mr. Wells, any comment or questions seeing none, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And this would be the third and final vote. The motion reads, I move in accordance with the authorization provided to the select board by the vote of town meeting on article one of the October twenty twenty-one special town meeting to authorize town council to take all necessary and reasonable action to complete the conveyance of forty-one Wall Street to the town of Milton. Is there a second please?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, Mr. Zulus, your hand is raised.
Can I offer a friend, can I offer a friendly amendment, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Um, um, comma, including to update the letter with respect to the seventy-five thousand dollar payment from the Milton Landing Condom, Condom Minimum Association.
Mr. Wells, is that accepted?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, it's a friendly amendment. It's been accepted by the second. Any further comment? Go call Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Freitag for your deliberations and your work in support of this very, very important transaction.
Welcome, thank you.
At this time, we move to agenda item number twelve, which is discussion approval metropolitan area planning councils, bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and we have with us, uh, town, uh, planner and director of community development, Ted Zawinski. Tim, welcome this evening.
Uh, 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 thank you, Mr. Chair, um, be, before we get started on this, because I just don't know if I'll be around for the teary goodbyes. I'm very excited to work with the new town administrator, but, um, Emery is great and she's done a great job. And I think the town is really lucky, um, that she agreed to take, uh, one last gig, uh, with the town. She's been great, um, and it's been a real steady ship at town hall. Um, so I just wanted to thank her, she gave me my first job at a planning school. Um, so I, I have a special place in my heart for her. So, uh, thanks a lot to Emery and, and, you know, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. My head. I, I want to ask Lynn, if you could promote, um, David Lutzenheiser and Mara Holland, M A P C, they're in the attendees. Um, so just by way of background, um, this is a project that was initiated through the Bachelor Planning and Planning Committee a few years ago, um, with consultation, collaboration with, um, with, with my department under former, uh, Director Phil Clark and also bicycle advisory committee. Um, you know, we finally got some budget and we're able to bring, um, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on board to do a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Um, so M A P C has been at work on this for about a year. Um, you had in your package of materials, um, a, a kind of a, uh, I don't want to say draft because it was all the material, it just wasn't formatted in, in, in the final product. But M A P C is going to be presenting the final product tonight. Um, we're hoping this will be a plan that will guide, um, public realm decision-making for the town, for the, uh, for, for the medium-term future. Um, as we make decisions about, um, paving and infrastructure and capital projects, uh, to take the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in, in town, um, in mind. You know, if you, if you like, are, are, are like me and you pass by the Pierce or the high school or even, you know, Glover School, the two fifty bus goes down Central Ave. And I see kids, you know, crossing at Turner's Pond on their bikes every day. Um, you know, people are biking in town. Um, we have progressively done, uh, uh, bits and pieces of a better job of updating our facilities. This plan is going to be a really awesome tool for us to be able to make, um, biking, walking, rolling through town much safer, much more effective. Um, and really hopefully, um, take some cars off the road, improve congestion, improve air quality, all really great benefits that come. Um, you know, taking people out of cars and giving them safe and effective options. So, um, our partners at M A P C have, have a presentation on the plan. I'm going to let them take it away. Um, so David and Mara, you guys can, can go ahead.
Thank you and welcome, Mara and David.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay, we have a short presentation. Um, I know you all have a lot of agenda items tonight, so we'll do our best to, um, keep it, um, keep it short. Um, can everyone see this okay? Great. Um, so the, um, as you know, the project team, um, was, uh, Tim, um, with the town of Milton and, um, David, who is a senior transportation planner with M A P C, he's here with me today and myself, uh, Mara Holland. Uh, we are both, um, in the transportation planning, uh, department at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is our regional planning agency. So as a, uh, some quick background, um, in twenty fourteen, Milton received recognition as a bike-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists. Um, and the town has an active bicycle advisory committee as well as master plan implementation committee that both helped, um, advise us on putting together this report. And, uh, our task was to put, um, to show a comprehensive transportation network that would, um, incorporate a variety of different types of facilities to help people walk, bike, uh, roll. We use the term rolling, um, to talk about other types of wheeled mobility besides biking, such as wheelchairs, walkers, scooters, strollers, moped, skateboards, um, even those kind of one-wheel things that are now coming out, which I don't know the name of, but a lot of different types of mobility that are happening. So we want to really be inclusive to all those different, um, ways people choose to get around. So I'll go through some existing conditions right here that we, um, we found as we were putting together this plan. Um, this is a map of a lot of the existing facilities that Milton has right now. As you can see towards the south, uh, Milton has a, a really robust network of walking trails within the Blue Hills that they share with Quincy. Um, toward, to the north, there's that green line that shows the Nippon City, um, River Trail. Um, and then in between in the blue is some existing bike infrastructure that's sort of a, a combination of, um, lanes as well as, uh, sharrows, which is the light blue there, which are the white, uh, painted pictures of people biking on the streets that are supposed to show that the street should be shared, but they're not actually separated spaces for people biking. This is a map of, uh, the sidewalk coverage in Milton. So you can see from the green areas, that's, uh, where there's a sidewalk on both sides. A lot of those areas are neighborhoods, a lot of residential areas. And then as you see, the larger streets, the more connectors, um, that really bring people to different places within the Milton. A lot of those have either a sidewalk on one side or no sidewalk at all. And then, as we all know, um, COVID changed a lot of our patterns, um, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And, uh, so we looked at what, how those patterns changed in Milton. And from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, we saw a eight percent increase in bike activity and a one hundred percent increase in pedestrian activity within the town of Milton. Um, and this data comes from the state through a, um, a platform called Streetlight that gets data from, uh, cell phone data. So, um, just so folks know where that came from, because we've gotten that question a couple of times. Uh, vehicle crashes in Milton, um, are, are pretty high, um, and they're continuing to grow with the exception of a dip in twenty twenty. Um, these, uh, this sort of pattern is pretty consistent with what's happening around the state. Crashes have been continuing to grow for a very long time. Um, they dipped overall in twenty twenty, but, um, because a lot of people were not traveling as much. But as you can see in twenty twenty-one, crashes, um, have continued to rise. Many of these crashes are happening on, um, I ninety-three as well as, uh, Blue Hill Ave, Blue Hills Parkway interchange, uh, uh, north of Milton up here as well as on twenty-eight, uh, further south here. So we still have a lot of these major, um, connecting corridors within the town that we showed previously that don't have, um, walking or biking infrastructure. Um, we are seeing a lot of, a lot of crashes happen on those, um, and these are also reflective of, of vehicle crashes. Um, we also put out a survey as part of the Milton, um, bike and pedestrian plan. We received over five hundred responses to the survey. Over ninety percent of people, um, lived in Milton, so most of these responses are from people, are from residents of your town. One of the questions we asked, um, was to what places would you or your household like to walk, bike or roll? The number one answer was grocery stores, restaurants or other food stores. We also heard a strong desire for visiting friends and family, shopping centers, community events, as well as to, um, K through twelve schools. We had a lot of folks come to our public meeting in April. Many of them were parents, many of them expressed a really strong desire to have better walking and biking conditions around the schools within Milton. Um, another question we asked was, um, how would you like to use Milton's current and future trails? Not surprisingly, uh, number one and number two were walking and cycling. We also heard that people wanted to explore nature, they wanted to visit outdoor vendors that maybe promote local businesses, um, as well as bringing children to play at playgrounds or parks. Um, and then we didn't actually specifically ask this question, but many folks mentioned different types of amenities they wanted included within the town that it included things like signage, benches, lighting, um, greenery, ramps for wheelchairs, walkers, strollers, um, various different things that would really help improve the experience beyond just the idea of, um, reconstruction and, and infrastructure. Uh, we also asked what were some challenges and barriers to getting around the town now for walking and biking and rolling? Um, the number one barrier was a lack of or inadequate infrastructure for walking, biking and rolling. The number two barrier was driver behavior, which included things like speeding, not obeying traffic laws, cutting through side streets, driving aggressively. Um, and we know that a lot of these behavioral issues for, for driving can be resolved, um, by better infrastructure as well. Um, so, uh, we'll, we'll talk about some of our infrastructure, um, plans a little bit later. And then here's some other barriers that folks brought up, general safety concerns, having a lot of traffic in the town. Um, and then a lot of specific challenges for the more vulnerable road users within the town that includes children, seniors and, and people with disabilities. And then we also asked, uh, are there specific areas that need to be improved within the town? And we heard a lot about, um, these particular streets. Blue Hill Avenue was mentioned quite a lot, East Milton Square was mentioned, um, many times, Brook Road, Canton Ave. Um, so we've looked at these as well, um, when thinking about our, um, infrastructure recommendations. And so we did a couple of different things, um, for the town. Um, here we've put together some policy and program recommendations that we hope will be really easy and relatively, um, quick to implement. Because one thing that we heard in the public meeting was that there's some frustration that, um, like, projects take a really long time. And I think we know from a transportation perspective that historically, a lot of projects have taken five, ten years because they've been major construct, reconstruction projects. And, um, so we've wanted to think about some short-term, quick, um, maybe inexpensive ways to make some changes for people in the next, like, just couple of years. So I won't read all of these, uh, but these were included in your materials and, uh, we've gone more in-depth with including, um, different resources, examples, funding opportunities for these as well within the report. And I will hand it off to David to talk more about our, our infrastructure recommendations.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mara. Um, so with ongoing projects, um, this is a list of some of the ongoing projects, uh, in the region right now or within, uh, Milton. Uh, one thirty-eight Mastod has done some studies on improvements, potential additional improvements to one thirty-eight. There is a Boston to the Blue Hills transit study that our sister C T P S agency, C T P S, is working on right now to look at improving transit to the Blue Hills, uh, you know, the Red Line is a few miles away and some of the buses are, are not as frequent as they could be. So looking at options to better connect, uh, the community and particularly from, you know, some of the transit or, uh, stations to, uh, to the Blue Hills. Uh, the Boston, Blue Hills Greenway is a, is a study that we're doing, uh, with, with some funding to look at, uh, providing connections in parallel with the transit study, the Greenway study is looking at providing safe and accessible corridors from Boston through Milton, Quincy and, and Dedham and, and so forth to the Blue Hills. You know, creating a, a really robust way to get there without, you know, having to get into your car or in addition to, to driving. Um, you know, the Mattapan Greenway is, is a process on the Mattapan side of the Nippon City River that's looking at particularly long edge water drive to create, uh, trail along that section. Uh, and then, then there's the upcoming roundabout at Route twenty-eight and Chica Top Avenue that Mastod is building. So next slide, please. Okay, so, um, um, Mara, can you skip to the next slide, then I'll go back. Um, thank you. So obviously we don't have time to, to do a detailed presentation on, on projects, so we'll keep it very high level. And, and what we're focusing on are developing a network of greenways within the town of Milton. And the greenway projects would, are corridors that would provide the best level of, of infrastructure quality for pedestrians and cyclists. And, and that could be a shared use path like we see on the Nippon City Greenway and, you know, separated from the roadway, a nice two-way path. Or it could be, uh, a network of, of sidewalks and protected bike lanes on the street. Uh, and the four major corridors that we've identified that, that could be built out as part of this plan, um, to create this, not only the connection to the Blue Hills, but throughout Milton, or the Milton Greenway, which is sort of the east-west corridor, uh, that we see. Um, and I'll talk about each of these in, in the subsequent slides. Uh, Boston to Blue Hills, which particularly is Blue Hill Parkway and Unquity Road. Uh, Cross Blue Hills is making improvements to Chica Tabber Road and then some of the roadways through the Blue Hills. And then finally, the Nippon City Trail, which is pretty much complete in Milton, but there are gaps in, in, in Boston. So we looking at extending that to, to basically the trailside museum area. Now, if you go back a slide, and I just wanted to, to, um, talk about, um, but when we define a greenway, a greenway will be defined as a continuous, safe corridor for cycling, walking, ideally in a green setting, but that's not always possible. So creating that safe space, um, starting in the, the top left is, 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 you know, greenways either in the road right of way or they're in a park setting. If it's on the road, sort of the first phase would be like what you did at Brook Road and creating a space for, for biking there. Uh, the second phase could be, you, you know, uh, creating some protection with barriers that protect the cyclists and from the, from the drivers and, and also having separate sidewalks. The third sort of phase or, or next stage would be like is being done in East Milton Square, creating, you know, protected bike lanes at the sidewalk level. Offered in a park setting, we see on the current conditions on Pine Tree Brook. Um, and also in the Ponce Parkway and in both situations, you know, creating, you know, widening that to create a nice two-way path. It's paved or some harder or hard accessible surface to look like the image, uh, to the right. Um, so that's sort of what we think of as a greenway, what the characteristics of that greenway would look like. Um, Mara, if you could skip again to, to the, the two slides forward. Um, okay, so the first of those is what we call the Milton Greenway. And feel free to change it to something else, but it's basically the east-west corridor that connects the high school, Turner's Pond, um, Granite Avenue and all the way to Paul's Bridge. And it's basically sort of a spine route that connects throughout the town and connects a number of schools and, and parks and, and other features. And, and the goal, starting at, uh, so the upper right corner is, is that there's a, a, an old rail bed that be created to a rail trail, looking at narrowing or reducing the number of lanes on Granite Avenue, which is a Mastod road to, to create a, a better system for, for cycling and walking there and also make it easier for people to cross the street altogether. Um, and then on Brook Road, uh, looking at ways to widen the, the separate sidewalk there to create a two-way path in some sections of Brook Road and other sections, maybe, you know, moving the curbs in to create separated bike lanes on that street. Uh, Pine Tree Brook is, is really a potential opportunity to go from Brook Road, uh, all the way, you know, over to Blue Hill Avenue, creating a nice accessible path, the continuous path. Right now, it's, it's sort of continuous in parts of one side. Right now, it's sort of continuous in parts of one side and not parts of another side, but we have some ideas of how to continue that all the way through. And then finally, what we call a shared street on Brushhill Road. If you go to the next slide, I can talk more about that. So on the left, as I mentioned, Pine Tree Brook and, you know, upgrading that path network. And this surface on the left is not that bad, actually. It's actually pretty good, but there are places where the path is discontinuous. It doesn't really connect all the way in an improved way, all the way to the Parkway. Brushhill Road, we're looking at potentially a more of a shared street where, you know, one option would be to remove that center line and create, you know, dash shoulders for pedestrians and cyclists like are shown here. It would not change the character of the road. It would just change the striping in a way that prioritizes pedestrians and cyclists over drivers. And perhaps you can put in, you know, speed humps or some other, you know, sort of traffic calming measure to provide slower traffic and allow all users to share in a way that doesn't change the character of the street, but prioritizes cycling and walking. Next slide, so that's the Milton Greenway. The Boston to the Blue Hills, this is just one concept that we're looking at. And right now, the Blue Hills Parkway has two lanes northbound and one lane southbound with bike lanes next to the parking. So we're looking at one potential option could be on the bottom image there with the cross-section and that space where you have that extra northbound lane to, you know, move some things around and make a nice two-way path there, eliminate the bike lane, but move that space to the center and still have the one northbound lane and the one southbound lane, but creating a nice two-way path in the middle adjacent to the, or just to the right where those trees are, there'd be a nice connection throughout Blue Hills Parkway. On Unquity Road, that street is pretty narrow, has very narrow or three or four-foot shoulders on there, and it's not really the greatest place for cycling and walking. So considering maybe that could be made one way, certainly past the Boy Scout camp, creating maybe one way to allow more space for people to walk and bike. It's difficult to widen because of the, you know, because of the topography and the wetlands and so forth. Both of these roads are DCR roads, which we understand would have to work with DCR on that. Next, across the Blue Hills is just looking at ways to improve, you know, conditions on particularly Chica Taba and some of the roads through the park. And the Mottson Valley Parkway, the DCR is doing a study now to look at between Paul's Bridge and Blue Hill Avenue and the Trailside Museum to look at, not only in the Ponce Valley Parkway, but Brushhill Road and some of the other streets and how it can make a nice greenway connection to the Blue Hills from that whole trail network along Truman Parkway and so forth. And I think we have one or two more slides. That's it. So next step, we'll be working with Tim and, you know, any comments that you have to provide to us, and we'll finish that up in the next few weeks. So thank you for your time, and I'll leave it to you all whether to answer questions or not.
Thank you, Condi. Are there any questions, comments, or suggestions? Yes, Ms. Musto.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. One is, some of these areas that you're talking about, they also involve other communities that border us, whether it's Matapan or it's Hyde Park or Reedville. So I would say that I think it would be helpful to have a meeting before we implement some or consider implementing some things that go into adjoining communities and also to make sure that the neighbors in those areas in Milton even have more information on this. There was that one meeting in April, but I know lots of people, you know, every time it's busy, this is in the summer that we're getting this. So, I mean, I was hoping that in the fall, we could have some kind of a, another presentation where people could weigh in on some of these things. I do think that some of the areas, a lot of these ideas are very good ideas, but I also would like to get some input from some adjoining communities that are right next door to us. I think that would be helpful in some neighborhoods. Thank you.
You're Ms. Musto, Mr. Wells. You're on mute, Richard.
I headed, but it didn't work. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you both. I agree with Roxanne on some of these areas is very good. I mean, our bike path, the Green, the Ponce Greenway from a bit of all the net since it started, the first thoughts of it 20-something years ago, we should never do it. I do think, though, that you left one key component out of the presentation. Every photo you showed, and Tim knows, I know a little bit about traffic and issues in this community. We are the largest about it to the city of Boston. Every bridge you talked about, every street. I ask you this question, sir. Do you have any idea how many cars flow through this town daily commute on all the streets that you mentioned? Anyone? So the answer is well over 100 to 150, some days even closer to 200,000 cars. When you talk about reducing Granite Ave to a lane, Unquity Road to one lane, making northbound on the Parkway one lane, you're only going to force that northbound. People use Waze, people use Google. You're going to force that traffic into the neighborhoods, which is already a concern in nearly every community, every neighborhood in this community that busts those streets. So I heard this proposal at a community meeting once on just in the Granite Ave alone to reduce it probably one lane. And the pushback was just, I suggest any of you go watch the morning or the PM commute, cue how far deep it goes. As Roxanne said, some of the ideas, some of the places are great. There are places in this community which is good. But if you're going to talk about reducing lanes on thoroughfares that are already significantly overcrowded on a daily basis, you're pushing congestion further and deeper into nearly every neighborhood, this community. I just can't sit back and say, okay, let's do that. Because we know, Emery, you've been here as long as I have, if not longer, you know how many complaints we get on traffic in this community. Go to any traffic community, look at the line. So I think you need to look hard and long, and Tim, you know this. Stop talking about major thoroughfares in the street in this community and reducing them, you're going to have a big problem because I don't know what you're going to do with that congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Bradley, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I actually have a different take on this. I know that my son and his rowdy group of friends bike all over town. And they bike all the way up to Stella's to do lunch or breakfast. They bike down to Pat's in Lower Mills. There are some extremely dangerous roadways that our children are biking on. And to me, the only way that we start changing the way that we look at how we move about the town is to actually force us to look at that. So by reducing some of these lanes, it's going to force us to say, huh, it might make more sense if we bike or if we walk. And I think that it's just a different way of looking at things. I can tell you that for my son and my daughter and almost all of their friends, they're biking, they're walking through this town, they're walking into other towns, they're walking into other neighborhoods or biking. They aren't thinking about cars the way that my generation and all y'all's generations have thought about cars. And so I think that, I think that it's just something that we need to, instead of just saying, oh, no, hold on, it's going to make traffic worse, it might actually make traffic better in town. And so I'm just, I'm really open to this, and I'm really excited to see some of these ideas because not only do I think that it might be a beneficiary piece to our town, our nice little quiet suburb, as a lot of us like to say, but it will also really help our kids get, be able to get around easier. Because I hold my breath when my son rides his bike through East Milton Square right now. It's, I white-knuckle that whole ride until he gets there and texts me that he's okay. But I really think that it's something that I really embrace. And I thank you, Tim, and to the MAPC for bringing this forward because it is a way that our communities are starting to move, is to really move into other modes of transportation. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Yes, Mr. Zawinski.
Yeah, and I appreciate everyone's comments here. And I think, you know, when it comes to transportation planning, it's one of the trickier areas because, you know, we all need to get where we're going, and we all need to figure out how to get there. And people have very, you know, strong reactions to how much time they spend in traffic or how much time they spend waiting for the bus or whatever. You know, one thing that I'll say is that when I first got here as Planning Director, one of the first documents I read was the final report of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. And I was really impressed with that committee's work and with the conclusions they came to, which stressed, you know, as the first, second, third, and final priority is safety. The safety of our streets is of paramount importance. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that this is Milton or Bosch in the blood, the victims of traffic violence. We had a bicyclist fatality last year on Blue Hills Parkway. We had pedestrian fatality on Brushhill Road a few years ago. Yup, one was killed crossing the street. We had a fatality on Blue Hill Ave and Robin Street just a few months ago. Chica Taba and Randolph is the most dangerous intersection, you know, in the state, if not the region. So, you know, it's hard. I get it, you know, to ask people to make a change in how they think about how they get around. But, you know, doing this sort of work in terms of, you know, reducing lane widths in terms of providing additional alternatives, safe alternatives for people to get around is the way that we make our streets safer. Enforcement only goes so far, education only goes so far, signage only goes so far. We really need to be talking about changing the physical design and the physical structure of our streets. And I think, you know, the thing that's probably, you know, most important to the day-to-day person about how they get to work and, you know, are they going to send traffic or not, the only way to reduce congestion is to take our folks. It's the only way. It's the only thing that works. And, you know, the only way that you can do that is to provide alternatives, whether it's bikes, whether it's walkable neighborhoods through land use regulation, whether there's improvements to transit. So these are all individual pieces that we need to be thinking about together. You know, all that being said, you know, we're looking at a really broad plan here with some really, I think, really great ideas for projects, but really conceptual ideas for projects. And so, you know, if the Select Board, you know, wants to take on a project, you know, for a bicycle improvement, you know, when we get into those details, absolutely talking to people, you know, who are going to be affected by that, who live on that street, who live in that area, absolutely going to be in conversation with Quincy and Canton and, you know, the folks in Hyde Park and the folks in Matapan. We're having those conversations already. So I think, you know, when you look at a plan like this, what you have to think of, is this reflecting our values, is this reflecting our priorities? And then, you know, when you get into sort of the details, that's when you start to say, okay, you know, what are going to be the effects of this? How do we mitigate those effects? How do we get the sort of the viewpoints of the people that are going to be, you know, intimately affected by these?
Ms. Musto, you're on mute, Roxanne.
Sorry, I have a couple of quick questions. I wanted to find out from the MAPC what groups they've also spoken with about these bike trails. And also, my understanding is that they're not just for bikes, they're for pedestrians too. So we want to make sure that where these are going, that they're safe. I know, I wanted to understand how, if you had a list, for instance, of the DCR bike trails and this map showing, do they cross roadways or do they go under roadways? Or do they go over roads? Because some of these areas are DCR roads as well. So I'm just trying to get a sense of that. And I know, Tim, you just said that you were elaborating on conversations with other communities. So I wanted to get a sense from you who you've, which communities you've spoken to or groups about some of the adjoining areas. Thank you.
Mrs. Zawinski.
Yeah, so we've been, my department's been taking meetings with folks from DCR, folks from BPDA, and folks from Boston Transportation Department. In addition to, they've been doing a lot of work, as David alluded to earlier, with the Edgewater Neighborhood Association in Matapan. DCR is working with City of Boston and those neighborhood groups for an extension of the DePonce Greenway. You know, currently, it kind of stops at Matapan Square and then kind of comes down on the Milton side to the DCR esplanade on our side of the river. They're talking about extending it across Matapan Square, along Edge Water Drive, you know, down, you know, potentially, you know, down to Hyde Park. They've been working together with the community over there, and we've taken a couple of meetings just to sort of, you know, get the feel for, you know, what is the town's, you know, appetite for additional potential processes? We only own one piece of land on the river over there. So, you know, I said, you know, conceivably, you know, we could talk about a crossing there. Everything else is DCR, so it really is up to them if they want to land a new bridge. There is discussion of an additional crossing from Matapan over to the Milton side on DCR land by Osceola Street in Matapan. So there's been a couple of conversations in that regard. There's also some foundations in City of Boston that are particularly interested in this type of work that I've had a couple of meetings with. And then, you know, just, you know, I wouldn't even call the meetings, but phone calls with folks in Quincy, you know, where we kind of chat about how can we kind of work together on, you know, making Adams Street, you know, a safer, you know, bicycle corridor? Are there any other opportunities? So hasn't really risen to the level of formality or kind of project-based discussion. But we do try to keep, you know, those lines of communication open. And then I think David and Emery can probably address some of your other questions, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I just wanted to see if the MAPC could address the other questions.
David, do you want to speak to the DCR roadways?
Yes, we're actually meeting with DCR tomorrow to better understand some of the projects that they're working on throughout the entire Napaunset River Basin and some of the work there. I would note that, you know, our plan is a vision. It's, you know, the greenways are a vision for connected corridors, and it's really, we want to provide the stimulus, the ideas, but it obviously is up to the town and the Select Board and everyone to decide how and when to move that forward. And we'll be glad to help in that process, you know, going forward. But, you know, that's, you know, we want to create the vision, but it's a collective effort of cities, towns, Mastod, DCR to make these projects happen.
I'll also note that, right as we were starting this Milton Bike and Pedestrian Plan, we are also finishing a master plan for the town of Dedham. And the transportation recommendations that we included there are really supportive of continuing work across municipalities as well as improving bike and pedestrian corridors, not just, you know, in a small section, but really thinking about how you get from A to B on a longer corridor. David completed a bike and pedestrian plan for the town of Dedham in 2014. And we also are working on, as David mentioned earlier, a Boston to Blue Hills project where we're working with the city. And we've engaged Dedham and Quincy in thinking about how some of these routes can connect, at least from the Napaunset Greenway down to the Blue Hills, to allow more people to access the really wonderful resource that is the Blue Hills, which is a really fantastic opportunity for people, both in, you know, in Dedham, Milton, Quincy, and in Boston as well. And so we are pretty involved in a number of bike and pedestrian projects. David and I are in this region. And I think it was also brought up that David and I are working with BPDA, excuse me, on an extension of the Napaunset Trail. So we are definitely well-involved in talking to a number of folks involved in the region of where you guys are.
Thank you. Roxanne, back to you.
Just a quick question. Will there be meetings then with, I know that you, Tim, you had said about the Edgewater Neighborhood in Matapan. So will there be DCR, will they be, if it's a roadway near DCR, will they be holding joint meetings with MAPC or before some of these things are implemented? I mean, I know that there are a lot of groups in, that are interested in hooking up to the Blue Hills. And so I know, like, the Napaunset Riverways Council, and there's a lot of different organizations. So just trying to understand. there's a lot of different organizations. So, just trying to understand the relationship between everybody, and how everybody sort of fits in with that. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you ready to raise?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, I get it, Tim. I know that during my time as chief, that was when we created the extension from Central Avenue that goes all the way down Truman now. And I think you may have been a part of it. The real complexity was how to get across Blue Hills Parkway to make that connection to the substation, and then continue going south. You may recall that DCR's initial intention was to try and bring the bike path along the Milton side, and actually underneath the Mattapan Bridge, stay right along, what is our Mattapan Bridge that goes from Mattapan to Boston, to go right along. And it just couldn't work. So, I am a coward. Anything, and I'm not being, like, prior comments, I'm not trying to be negative in this. I just understand the reality of congestion in this community. I think anything that can help to continue the bike path, the bike way, to get on both sides, for both the Boston residents and for everyone to use, is a good thing. And so, I can understand DCR wanting to do that. The second thing is, just if you're asking for us to approve this tonight, if we vote on this, are we voting, what is it exactly you're asking us to?
Well, so what I would say is, maybe tonight might not be the night. You know, MAPC is still kind of wrapping up the sort of finishing touches on the plan. So, I would hesitate to ask you to vote to approve anything. They didn't have the final version in your hand. We're sort of 98% there. But I think it was a good opportunity now for the MAPC team to present kind of the broad strokes. You know, but I think what we would ask is for the Select Board to adopt this plan in the same way that, you know, we've adopted the Housing Production Plan, or the Complete Street Prioritization Plan, as, you know, the sort of the guide for how we're going to address and kind of approach bicycle and pedestrian improvements in town, just like the Housing Production Plan is the town's approach towards housing production. You know, so it's not kind of, it's not any kind of binding, like, you know, if you don't build this bike path, then, you know, forty lashes with the wet new.
Right, I get that.
But, you know, it's kind of like, this is going to, what our approach is going to be. And, you know, Richard, I wasn't trying to come at you too hard over there. I'm very passionate about this. But I do definitely, you know, we know what we're getting into when we talk about things, you know, that are going to affect congestion, that are going to affect lane, you know, distribution, everything. So, I think our eyes are wide open on that sort of thing. It's just, we do have to have that conversation, but with the trade-offs. So, I definitely appreciate those comments. And, you know, it's going to be, they're going to be tough conversations, but I think they're necessary ones.
Mrs. Zolos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim mentioned the report of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. The recommendations and key components of this plan, although I guess, Tim, it's kind of, it's almost final form, address, as Tim mentioned, the concerns for safety, which were paramount in the feedback that we got from residents in the work of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. It addresses the desire for pedestrian and bike safety at various hotspots, including Brook Road, Squanum Street, Brushill Road, that were identified by the Traffic Mitigation Committee, reaching out to residents in public forums, seeking feedback online. You can look at that report, and you can see all the feedback that we got from residents with a desire for safety, and biking, and walking. And so, I think this report addresses a lot of those things with respect to what's going to happen if you expand sidewalks, or shorten, or collapse lanes. It seems to me, Tim, we did have that traffic modeling software, and maybe that would provide some specifics, rather than just guesswork about what may happen in neighborhoods if there is an additional lane, or if there is more, a safer lane for bikes, or a wider sidewalk for pedestrians. So, perhaps some use of that traffic modeling software would give us some feedback on that as you go through this process. But I think this is a great step forward, and a great offshoot from the report of the Traffic Mitigation Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Zolos. I'd just note also that it has a relationship to our master plan here in the town of Milton. That should not be overlooked. Tim, I just want to summarize on this, because I know we have much more business ahead for you with very little time left in the meeting, as the clock is ticking. So, this is a near-too-final version, but not quite there yet. Some other information to be garnered. So, would it be appropriate to consider this an important information building session, in that we defer approval to a subsequent date?
Yeah, I think that about sums it up. And I think, you know, to some of the concerns, or some of the comments that Roxanne made, I think maybe what we can do is, you know, when a final draft is kind of on the agenda, we can do maybe a little bit more publicity, you know, if we want to take, you know, some additional public commentary, or answer questions, so that people who are interested in this come to the Select Board meeting. If that's something that you guys are interested, we can certainly precipitate that.
Thank you very much. And again, thanks to David and Mara for your excellent presentation, and for listening to the ideas that members of the Select Board have passed along. Tim, we will now be moving to Agenda Item 13, which is Discussion Approval Metropolitan Area Planning Council's Findings Relative to Local Fair Housing Committees in Massachusetts, and Propose a New Charge for Milton's Fair Housing Committee. Could you introduce that topic, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the genesis of this project kind of goes back to, again, kind of the start of my tenure as Planning Director. One of the things that I think came out of the start of the Equity and Social Justice for All Committee was a greater interest in affordable housing, in fair housing, and just general kind of housing issues generally. I think the work of the Select Board Housing Committee around the Housing Production Plan kind of sparked people's interest. And so, I actually wound up getting a fair amount of emails from folks that were like, I see that there's vacancies on the Fair Housing Committee. Could I join? And what we found was that the Fair Housing Committee has been kind of on the books for a while, but not quite active in terms of meeting regularly, in terms of, you know, reporting on fair housing issues. And so, we dug a little deeper and saw that, you know, the charge for the Fair Housing Committee dates back to 1978. And it's actually kind of, it's a funny kind of charge, in that it's kind of really rooted in a certain time, place, and circumstance. Charged with, you know, not, well, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. We decided to take advantage of the MAPC Technical Assistance Program, which kind of is a kind of general purpose pot of money for planning projects that MAPC kind of puts out. And we submitted a project proposal to ask MAPC to kind of do some research on our behalf. Sorry, I don't know if you hear the dirt bikes outside. That's life in the big city. But it's nice enough that my window's open, so it's good. We wanted them to do a little bit of research into what are some best practices for how local fair housing committees in the region and throughout the country operate? Because the current charge wasn't really working for our group, you know, so there wasn't really a lot of impetus for them to be, and to kind of conduct any activities. And so, we got the grant, we got a team of MAPC housing planners working on this. And I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to bring up a, just a really brief presentation, and I'm going to be super-duper brief. And hopefully, we can kind of get in. Now, can you guys see my screen now? I'm bringing up a PowerPoint presentation. So, the project is around, how do we reinvigorate the Fair Housing Committee? And so, just a little bit of history, the Fair Housing Committee was established in 1978. Its charge had three focuses. So, study the residency of minority populations to understand why they live predominantly in the north section of the town, and to see if illegal practices have contributed to this pattern. Examine other areas of town to see if equal access to housing exists, and then consult with the Commission Against Discrimination to develop additional steps to prevent illegal housing practices, and ensure equal access to housing in Milton. Now, I don't doubt that the Fair Housing Committee at the time met and discussed and conducted its activities according to its charge. I don't have very much documentation at all of the activities of the Fair Housing Committee dating back to 1978. Haven't come across any minutes, haven't come across any reports that charged them with producing a report on those questions. I don't have it. That's not to say it doesn't exist. You know, records, you know, back then are not the greatest. But I think the general kind of gist is, we haven't seen a lot of activity from the Fair Housing Committee, because it is kind of, again, specific to that 1978 set of circumstances. And, you know, isn't really, doesn't really give that committee the tools to sort of broaden its activities into kind of broader fair housing questions. The past several years, very infrequently have met. And so, we just thought that there was opportunity, you know, given, you know, renewed resident interest in the Fair Housing Committee, to kind of start to ask these questions of, how do other teams do it? And so, you know, we got the Technical Assistance Program grant, and the scope of work asked MAPC to do an assessment of previous Fair Housing Committee activities, come up with a sort of a menu of best practices from other communities in the region that have active Fair Housing Committees, to develop a new charge for a new Fair Housing Committee, and then to develop an implementation plan for kind of getting that new committee off the ground. So, I had sent some materials. MAPC produced a number of deliverables. It's quite a bit of material. I hope you at least were able to kind of skim through it. But the new charge, or the proposed new charge for the Fair Housing Committee recommends membership from the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Housing Authority, or their designees. I always like to make sure that everyone knows that they can designate someone to be their representative, as well as at-large resident members, including a requirement that, you know, at least one of the members be a renter, someone that is a tenant in housing in Milton, and that, you know, is kind of living the life of kind of rent, where these fair housing issues are really at the forefront of the tenant experience. And then, their responsibilities would include to, you know, receive fair housing complaints, really to be kind of the place where people go, if they feel like, you know, a Realtor that I was working with is committing a fair housing violation, or my landlord is, you know, doing this, that, or the other thing. Is this a fair housing violation? You know, and would ostensibly be a body that has some level of expertise in these issues to know, you know, yes, this is a violation, we've got to take action. No, it's not. But here are some other resources or tactics to kind of help yourself, educate themselves on fair housing issues. We want to make sure that anyone that's on this committee is kind of, you know, similar to how, you know, a certified professional needs to keep up on continuing education. We want people to understand fair housing issues, fair housing law, so that we have, you know, as close to kind of citizen experts as we can, to advocate protected classes and fair housing opportunities in town, to advise staff boards, town meeting on fair housing issues, and then obviously, you know, importantly, to document a report on their activities. So, I mean, let me just take one step back, you know, in kind of having the conversations around this project, we had a number of focus groups. The MAPC team did kind of one-on-one interviews with people both in town and outside of town. And I think, you know, one thing that we wanted to do was kind of figure out, you know, how would this committee live, and sort of the ecosystem of kind of how to work in town. And so, obviously, we've got the Housing Trust, which, you know, is specifically charged with being the trustees of a fund. They have other activities kind of associated with them, but, you know, they really are the trustees of that money. And kind of other things are secondary to their charge. And then, you had the Select Board Housing Committee, which, again, was kind of purpose-built to kind of shepherd through the Housing Production Plan, get that adopted. And then, after that, kind of, the charge and their activities became a little bit fuzzier. And so, we thought, having a really kind of specific group that has, you know, a history in town, but focused on fair housing issues, would kind of take some things from both of those plates, and sort of alleviate some of the, you know, the activities that, you know, were not necessarily specifically charged to either of those other groups. And so, that was an element of thinking here. And so, you know, the next steps in kind of the proposed implementation plan that we put together is, you know, during this time, and during the fall, a kind of a soft recruitment period, to just sort of publicize, you know, hey, we're thinking of putting together a new Fair Housing Committee, you know, get your volunteer forms in. We want to do a little bit more active outreach into, you know, communities that are typically underrepresented in town government. I think, you know, again, the work of the Equity and Social Justice Committee has kind of brought that issue to the forefront. And I think we need to be deliberate about our, you know, our recruitment and our kind of outreach to communities, communities of color, renter communities, low-income communities, you know, rather than just kind of generally putting something out into the ether. And then, also, in the summer and fall period, to prepare a warrant article, to go to town meeting with the new charge of the Fair Housing Committee. I think the imprimatur of town meeting on the new Fair Housing Committee would be a powerful endorsement, that, you know, the town is really ready for this sort of thing, and embraces it. And so, you know, we do want to sort of put together an article. In the fall, I know we haven't necessarily have a date for a fall town meeting, but assuming there is one, we'd like to put an article in front of town meeting. And then, in the fall and the winter, you know, continue that recruitment, and do the formal appointment process. You know, the charge has some time kind of constraints on getting the committee together. And then, before the end of the year, you know, stand up that committee and get it off the ground. So, that's it for my presentation. I'll stop my sharing here now. You've got all the specific information. I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think what I would ask now is, if the board is prepared to do it, is to at least signal its support for, you know, putting together their Fair Housing Committee. And, you know, I don't have a warrant article for you now. I would work with the council on that. But, you know, if and when the warrant is open for a special town meeting, or the next town meeting is coming up, you know, the Select Board will at least consider supporting that article. So, I'm happy to take any questions.
You're muted, Arthur.
Good to myself. My apologies. Didn't want to bother you with the drive-thru. Mrs. Zolos, you're recognized, and then Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Tim, I think this is absolutely needed, and I think I support this 1,000%. A couple of specific questions about the charge that's been proposed. One is, the first bullet point talks about the Fair Housing Officer. Is that as defined in statute?
I don't know. It's me. And that's typically been the case. I'd be interested to hear kind of how that gets established. I think we want to have some clarity and specificity on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, just because it's, because that's exactly right. So, it may be a fair housing officer, who shall be the town planner, or something like that. But just some guidance on that first bullet point, I think will be helpful. On the first paragraph, and the paragraph after the bullet points, it talks about the boards appointing their own designee annually for terms of two years. So, I'm not sure that quite works, if you're appointing them annually for terms of two years. So, I think you'd probably just, either appointing them annually, or you're appointing them for terms of two years, one or the other.
Yeah, I think the sentiment is to have the longer term, just so that people can kind of get their feet wet.
So, then I would just say, appoint them for terms of two years. And then, finally, in the next paragraph, it talks about the five at-large members being appointed to two-year terms and qualified by the Select Board. Not sure what "and qualified" means, so I just take that out, and just say, appointed to two-year terms by the Select Board. So, those are my thoughts on the charge. Thank you for this.
Ms. Musto, and then Mr. Wells.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One of the things I know you mentioned were fair housing complaints. And one thing I would say is that when we have issues between landlords and renters, a lot of times, that goes before the Board of Health. So, somebody doesn't have heat, or things like that. So, I'm wondering how, you know, who's going to listen to that? You know, is it going to go to the Board of Health still? Is it going to go to this committee? That's a little confusing to me. That's one thing. And the other thing is, I'm wondering if there's a way to roll in one of the other committees into this committee. And the other thing is I'm wondering if there's a way to roll in one of the other committees into this committee. Because I feel like we have so many committees and Erin and I are going to be sitting to look at the committee. So I want to at least have a chance to sit down to really look at all the committees all together. I think in concept, it sounds like a great idea. I just hate, I hate having three different committees. I wish we could just cut it to two or one. So I, you know, I hesitate. That's my hesitation with this. It's not because I don't like the idea. I think you've done a lot of work on it and we had it before. I just want to see when we sit down if there's a way to sort of, you know, maybe make it into one or two committees that roll into one. I just think that's the thing I would have to say about that. And back to my initial question with the Board of Health, those would be my two things. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Roxanne. You know, I think, as I said, I don't know if the housing subcommittee has been officially dissolved. I know there was at least, I remember, you know, talking with Melinda and Katie about this. But, you know, I think, you know, during our conversations and other conversations I've had, you know, I think. It does, it does make sense because, you know, I am an ex officio member of a lot of committees as well, and so I get it. I get it a hundred percent and I always, you know, I'm kind of leery about, you know, asking for people to sign. You know, thinking deliberately about like, you know, is, does that committee still have work that it needs to do? Or can that kind of be kind of divided? I think, you know, you've got to have an affordable housing trust because you've got the money and there needs to be trustees. And I think, you know, the case, you know, and we would want to make a persuasive case to you and to the meeting. That the Fair Housing Committee is a discrete thing that also needs to exist. Way that, you know, perhaps the responsibilities and activities of perhaps the housing subcommittee could be kind of farmed out to the other scope. That is front of mind for us and then we can talk about, you know, that as we go forward. To your, to your first question and the field pointed this a little bit, but it's an interesting kind of distinction between. You know, you have in some smaller town kind of, you know, situations like Milton, you have a fair housing committee. In larger cities, you have, you know, a fair housing commission, which is just a couple of letters, but it's a world of difference. You know, the Fair Housing Commission in Boston, for instance. Has kind of adjudicatory powers to hear cases of fair housing complaints and make judgments and have reports of fact. A fair housing committee does not have that. And so when we say, you know, hear fair housing complaints or be sort of a repository for fair housing complaints. It's literally just that. It's kind of like a place to go to sort of make a complaint and get advice. You know, anything that actually would probably need to be acted upon would be forwarded to the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. Which, which is sort of the body that has, you know, investigatory enforcement and kind of, you know, capabilities. You know, to your point about the Board of Health, I think it's a really good one. And I think we would probably want to kind of figure out, you know, what is the best way to communicate between those two groups about, you know, or what are you hearing? You know, do we think this rises at the level of fair housing issue? Do we need to kind of elevate this? How could we be working together? You know, because I think, you know, the things that you guys hear, you know, are health-related things that may have a kind of housing component kind of attached to them. So we don't want to be taking anything away from the Board of Health. You know, but I think figuring out a way to collaborate and to kind of have information sharing, I think would be important. So we would definitely be interested in kind of furthering that conversation.
Richard, can I jump in for just a minute? Then I'll go to you. Just want to mention that last year we had four entities in town with Wood Housing in it. We had the Select Board Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Fair Housing Committee, and the Housing Authority.
Yeah, and I mean, you know.
Not a lot of dialogue among them, some crossover. One of the things that we did do was successfully disband. Select Board disbanded at the request of the Housing Committee, the Select Board Housing Committee. So that's gone, even though I think it's still on the roster of committees on the website. And we know we need resources to help us with our website and technology overall in town. But one of the things that I would ask is that regardless of how this comes out. That there'd be some place within the context of what it is that you will have on your site. That distinguish lets people know that there are these other entities and what the distinctions are among them. So that housing doesn't get just muddled to the point where people can't differentiate and understand the purposefulness.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. And again, you got to have the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust. You've got to have the Housing Authority because someone needs to be the trustees of all of their assets and activities. You know, again, I think, you know, we want to make sure we're super clear and super kind of, you know. Communicative about what are the discrete roles of each of these groups? Because I think, you know, it's tough because some of the activities that a fair housing committee would, would, you know, engage in. Really aren't appropriate for the Housing Authority Board or the Affordable Housing Trust.
Correct.
You know, it's just.
Thank you for that. I'm sorry. Richard, you recognized? You're on mute, Richard. Took a page out of my book.
I keep trying on mute, but I can't, okay. Arthur, finish. You two finish. I'm good. I'll wait till you're done.
No, we're done. Thank you.
So my point, Tim, is it's three points. It's Mike Zulis's point, it's Roxanne's point, and it's. We did dissolve our housing committee and I don't, I don't know, like, I suppose in the ideal world. It would make sense to merge responsibility, you know, I don't see this being a. High-demand, high-pressure committee. But would it be possible we could maybe roll this into. Affordable Housing Trust responsibility is kind of like a dual role. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here. Because I do recall, as the chair said, when we did dissolve the Housing Committee. It was with the support of the Affordable Housing Trust. And I may be wrong, but I believe it was Melinda who did bring it forward and I thought she brought it forward on behalf of the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. So I'm. I just think that, you know, if there's a way that we can roll some of this responsibility. That'd be great. Or for the entities that are involved, you know, have a representative, have a three-person committee. One for the Affordable Housing Trust, one for the Housing Authority, one for the Board of Health, like just, I don't know, I'm just trying to. On committee, we have so many committees. That's, that's.
No, and I get this, you know, like I said to everybody, like I go to a lot of these meetings as well and I'm very sympathetic to the select board. So a couple of things that I'll say. One of the reasons behind kind of the sort of the soft recruitment drive kind of, you know, recommendation. Is to see if there is, you know, interest in serving on this, on this type of body. We actually have had a number of applications even in the last week. You know, I don't know if people saw the agenda item without even doing any kind of more kind of in-depth, you know, publicity and then kind of engagement. You know, if it's, if it looks like we're not going to be able to roster a committee, then maybe we can talk about. About maybe sort of figuring something out, you know, another alternative. But I do think that there is an interest among residents and, you know, this is, the recommendation is to have representation from those three boards. You know, it would be a select board committee, so we think that the select board should have representation. But, you know, honestly, if the select board feels that it doesn't, you know, have the bandwidth to have a member, then we can talk about that. It's, it would be your charge to kind of, you know, figure out. But the thing that I would say about, you know. Again, the Affordable Housing Trust has discrete responsibilities and the people that you nominate to the Affordable Housing Trust, you nominate for a certain reason. The people that you would nominate for a fair housing committee may have other skillsets, you know, beyond just an interest in housing. That you would want to sort of nominate them for. So I think there is a way to think about, I mean, I think it's less about, you know, merging responsibilities of committees. And more about. Reaching into communities that would be interested in this, that maybe haven't typically been kind of, you know, reached out to for participation. Because I do think there is a demand out there to serve in this capacity. I think we can get, you know, enough people that it wouldn't be, you know, a burden on staff or any of these other boards. You know, but I think, you know, as we kind of go through the summer, you know, and start to sort of gauge interest, I think we can kind of keep our finger on that pulse. And come to, you know, a good conclusion. But I think, I think everyone's making really, really great points here that I think we need to be very deliberate.
Thank you, Tim. Mrs. Zulus.
So, so here's my point. Need an Affordable Housing Trust. You need a Housing Authority and you need a fair housing committee. Because the fair housing committee is the only committee and the only entity in town that's dealing with discrimination. Doesn't happen with the Board of Health, doesn't happen with the Housing Authority, doesn't happen with Affordable Housing Trust. It's clear, it's discrete, and I think it's something that we need.
I disagree with that. I, Mr. Chair, I just. I've seen discrimination things come from so many different bodies, both on the private and the public side. I, I get what Mr. Zulus says about, but it's not, it's not the sole responsibility for all three things that he just cited. Isn't coming upon everybody and every board, any, every entity in government in this town, so. And Tim's correct. If you identify it, it's M C A D or the Attorney General's Office is going to prosecute. Not us.
So where are we?
So again, this is informational. You know, because I think the, the real kind of, the mean potatoes is going to be, you know, if and when there's, you know, the next town meeting. You know, I'm going to be preparing an article. You know, to submit to the select board to put this group together. So I think, you know, there may be some further discussion amongst you all. I just want to kind of present. You know, kind of a preview of coming attractions, something that's not coming out of the clear blue sky. But that would be kind of the main kind of animating factor of, you know, is this going to be an article that we put on the warrant? Or is it going to be something that we kind of choose to, you know, further kind of look at or kind of strategize about?
Roxanne, your hand is raised?
Yes, this is my last question. I just wondered, Tim, do you know if any towns combine any of these committees or have like. You know, maybe they have a committee that has dual purpose with this, like does some of the fair housing and also does some of this other stuff? I'm just sort of wondering, like if their housing authority or their fair housing. I'm just wondering, like, is there any kind of an overlap, like with some of the other neighboring towns? Just because, you know, we are looking at committees. And we, I think this is definitely something that's needed. I'm not saying it isn't. I'm just wondering if there's anything else we can sort of roll into it. That's all.
Yeah, I'm not aware. I'd have to kind of go back and then maybe talk to our consultants about this. But, you know, one thing that I will say is that we are, we are members of a consortium of communities that. Home funding from the federal government. And through that consortium, we had a regional fair housing committee a few years ago. One of the issues with kind of the inactivity of that committee was the constituent communities had a hard time recruiting members to it. And so it really sort of became, you know, if you don't have like that farm system at the local level of people who are engaged with fair housing activities. You can't move on to sort of the regional level. The regional committee was great, but it sort of petered out once, you know, people lost interest. But I think, you know, as it relates to other kind of communities combining efforts, we can, we can a little bit further into that.
Mr. Zulus, and then I have a question.
Yeah, just, just a question. Tim, do you want an indication or a vote about whether there's directional support? For this kind of charge and an article for town meeting? So you don't do the work and then not have, you know, not have the, not, not. So you don't do the work for no reason?
No, that would be nice. You know, just to sort of know, at least to sort of continue on the path, you know, towards, again, the sort of the first parts of that implementation process of. You know, gauging interest and focusing on this thing. I think that would actually sort of, if we can kind of continue that step on the path. I think it would actually provide some good feedback to the select board for the next step. Like, hey, if we bring this to town meeting, we've got a roster of people that are ready to serve. So I think that, you know, at least that, I think would be.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. To support the town, the town planners, is that your title, Tim, Town Planner?
And Community Development.
Yeah.
The town planners' efforts. To prepare an article. For a fair housing committee. For the fall town meeting.
This is a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Question, one of my questions disappeared. Mike asked it. Second one is, we currently have a committee. We currently have a charge that is deep into the last century. You're proposing a new charge. Here tonight. Would you want that charge approved by the committee, by the board rather, as well? As part of Mr. Zulus's motion, if you'd accept a friendly amendment? And then have that to move forward with?
If, if you're prepared to do that, that would be great. You know, again, I'm trying to look at this in sort of chunks of manageable work, you know, for you all to digest, kind of given the comments and the questions that I've heard. I don't want, I don't want anyone taking a vote to kind of bite off more than they're comfortable with this point. But, you know, I.
Just one clarification. I don't want later on to see somebody saying, well, there was no charge, da-da-da-da-da. Okay, so I saw an odd of a cent for Mr. Zulus. And I see a lot of dissent as a friendly amendment from Ms. Bradley. And Mr. Wells is recognized and then Mr. Zulus is recognized. Mr. Wells.
So I only heard the last, I stepped away for a sec. I only heard the last. I think five words of Michael's. Motion, so I'm not. So do you want to amend, you want to, are you trying to amend it for us, Michael? You want to amend it for?
The motion, the motion is to support the town planners' efforts.
Okay.
To create a new fair housing committee and to prepare an article for the town fall meeting, fall town meeting for that purpose. Arthur has proposed a friendly amendment to approve the charge as outlined. For an updated charge for the existing fair housing committee as outlined. I am prepared to accept that friendly amendment. I think Erin, as the second, is as well. With the caveat that, that I would ask for the changes that I mentioned. The amendments that I mentioned, Tim, to the, to the amendments.
The original, to the original, what he originally proposed. So just now, my question, I just, Mr. Chair, this is like, so my question is. You want to prepare this and come back to us with it or prepare it like, just push it forward? Where are we at here?
He's going to.
And what's the existing? We don't have an existing fair housing committee. You just said.
We do.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Who's on it?
No one.
No, they're.
So we have, you mean, we have one in name, not, not in, not in, okay, that's why, that was my question. Like, I don't know anyone that's on it. Okay.
Thank you. So we have a motion that's now been friendly amended. It's with the second. Any further discussion?
I, Mr. Chair, I'd just come back. I'd want to see the final draft before we vote or anything to go to. So Mr. Zulus is out of, excuse me, I'm tongue-tied. Michael's motion is to prepare this and then come to us with it for a final approval to go to town meeting. Am I correct in that?
The motion is to support the town planners' efforts to prepare an article. For a new fair housing committee. And the motion has been amended to amend the, to amend the charge of the existing fair housing committee. With the changes that Tim has outlined in his packet. As refined by the suggestions that I made tonight. That's the motion.
So they haven't moved and seconded? Seeing no further discussion? Vote call on the motion that has been seconded. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes, I guess, I guess so, yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
I guess, yes, but I wish we could streamline this.
Mr. Doyle, yes.
Thanks, everybody. I mean, and I know I brought too straight kind of, you know, things to you that you've thought into. And I really do appreciate all of what you put into it. I've heard all of your. I've heard all of your, and, and I understand everything that you guys are saying, so we're going to move forward. I'm going to take all this feedback and then kind of see what we can figure out. So definitely appreciate all these concerns. We'll continue to work this out and, and, you know, bring something that, that I think everyone can be comfortable with and, and be, you know, fully supportive of. So I've heard it all and, and we'll work together on this. Thank you.
Yeah, one, one final comment, just for Tim. So this, this, what we've just approved, this would go to town meeting. This would have no membership until after passes town meeting. Am I correct? Or would we?
Correct.
Okay.
There are current members listed on the website.
Wow.
So they would be not reappointed, but you have to take a look at all of that. So we're speaking, if my memory is serving me correctly, and sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, agenda number fourteen. Discussion and approval authorized the town administrator to sign any grant agreements and contracts associated with the Milton Landing Recreation and Access Improvements Project, which the town received a Mass Trails Grant. Mr. Ziewinski, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully this one is easy peasy. I hope everyone had a chance to go to the event with the Lieutenant Governor. My wife had jury duty that day, so I was on babysitting duty. We got a Mass Trails Grant to do a feasibility study for extending the park freeway over to Milton Landing over the abandoned rail bridge. There are documents associated with that grant. It's a little bit of a complicated program. But we have a grant agreement and then a sort of standard state contract that will need to sign. And we're just asking for authorization for Amber. It's all super basic, you know, stuff. It's just, you know, paperwork.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the interim town administrator to sign any grant agreements and contracts associated with Milton Landing Recreation and Access Improvements Project. The town received Mass Trails Grant.
Is there a second please, Ms. Bradley?
A second.
Ms. Musto is second and Ms. Bradley, your hand is raised?
It is. I just really quickly wanted to say that I'm sure that Tim really meant that he was caring for his children because you can't babysit your own children. And so we should normalize fathers also caring for their children in the grand scheme of things. And I know Tim agrees with me. So thank you so much, Tim.
Yes.
He shook his head no.
No, we did not.
I know babysitting has a lot of different connotations.
Connotations.
Consider it normalized, Ms. Bradley.
So we have a motion and it has been seconded? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Out of order. Mr. Doyle, yes, it's getting a little late. Mr. Ziewinski, we're now
Wow.
sixty-five percent of the way home. Close to seventy percent. Item number fifteen, discussion update, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Tim?
So, this is the OPM, is that correct?
I think this is the appointments. This is.
We, we have fifteen of the discussion on, an update of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And we have sixteen committee appointments.
So, so, so the, the update is, the committee's been doing a lot of work since we, we got general contractor bids back earlier this year that were, that were very, very, very much beyond what our, our budget was. The committee has been working internally on developing a scheme for a modular option. We've also, and, and thank you for the support of the Select Board and the town administrator and town meeting to get the capital funding for that project to alleviate the costs on the Milton Animal League and their, and their donors. We've also gotten some money through the state, through Senator Timbaulty. So we've been really kind of trying to solve for, you know, we've got this much money, but this much project. And how do we kind of make the one fit inside the other? So that's what the committee's been working on. And we're at a point now where the committee feels that it would be best to, to rebid the owner's project manager position. Our discussions with R and D, which is our current owner's project manager, have kind of led to, we were hoping that a lot of the work that they had already done, that we had already paid them for, would be replicable for, for a new modular project. But effectively, we're kind of back to square one when it comes to bidding for this project. So, you know, they would need to, whoever is going to do this is going to have to prepare new bid documents. And what the committee felt was that it may be advisable to find an owner's project manager that has a little bit more experience with modular construct. Because it is different from kind of the sort of, you know, site built, kind of, you know, design to construction kind of process that we've been going through, you know, on the previous version. R and D does not have a lot of modular experience. And I think, you know, it was, the committee felt it was a good time to get a, get a new owner's project manager on board, you know, with that modular experience. And, and quite frankly, the, the, the person, R and D that we've been working with most closely may not even be available, you know, on a new contract. You know, he's, he's pursuing different opportunities with another, you know, potential with another firm. So it was a big selling point on the original OPM bid. And so again, it was just, it's, it's, it's a good time regardless of, of whether we had a new OPM or, or worked with our existing one. There's still work to do on the design of the building to kind of fit it into a modular structure. So there's space to sort of do this procurement, get this person on board and not lose any time on the project. Because I know everyone from the committee to the funders, to the animal league, to the town, to the Select Board, they're really concerned about the length of time this project is taking. But we think the modular option is the way to go. We think we have funding that'll shore up that, that donor funding. And we'll, we'll, we'll be the right track for this project. So what we're asking for is for the Select Board to authorize a procurement for, for, for a new owner's project manager. We have a, we have an RFP ready to go. It's gone through procurement. It's gone through town council. We can start that solicitation as, as early as next week if, if, if the Select Board authorizes that. So that's, that's the update.
So you need an authorization on that this evening, Tim?
Yeah, to rebid the, the owner's project manager position for the animal shelter construction project.
We do not have such a motion. Mr. Zulus?
I'll make a motion to authorize the rebidding of the owner's project manager for the animals shelter project.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Wells, you have a question? Richard, you're muted?
Given that I'm attached to the donor on this project, they won't understand this, but I do have one question to Tim. In the, in the seven hundred thousand that came from the Capitol Committee, it went through town hall. My memory of the presentation that came to us was that the town wanted to break out the, the town wanted to, and the, and Mel wanted to break out the, the site prep, the demolition, the ledge removal, and all that as a separate project done by us. And that's what we approved and that's what we moved forward to. Town meeting, is that still your intention?
That is, and, 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 you know, what, what I'll say is this, is that we, we identified the site prep and then the sort of the site clearing as, as a major cost that
Right.
was informing the kind of the high bids that we got. And so that funding is, 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 if not specifically earmarked, at least the intent is to use that money for that part. In terms of its kind of role in the wide project, the advice that we've gotten from, from folks in this field is that the, the jet, the, the bid for the actual project should actually come in three kind of phases for a modular project. Phase one is the site clearance, site prep work. Phase two is the modular construction in the factory. Phase three is sort of the finish work. So when modular is on the pad, then you've got to have guys come in, put the wires in, put the faucets in and everything like that. And so those will all get bid out separately, but simultaneously, if that makes sense, so it'd be three different sort of bids. And then that town money would sort of go towards phase one. And then the other money, you know, through the M A L gift account would go towards the other phases.
That was the, all right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm all set.
Hey, thank you.
Maybe in my lifetime, this will happen.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
It's getting late.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, I did that deliberately.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Certainly, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. So because Mr. Wells abstained, should he have also abstained from the discussion of this, like, like Ms. Musto has in the past?
Oh, to your point, Aaron, the money for the seven hundred thousand is separate and distinct. I've already gone through this, separate and distinct from.
That's not my point, Richard. That's not my point.
Oh, I'm where I'm at on it. I've been going through this for five years, more than this. This started before I was even on this board. So the vote for the donation came prior to me ever being on this board.
I understand that, Mr. Wells. My question is, is because you abstained from the vote, should you have abstained from any discussion regarding this? As Ms. Musto has on many other topics. That's my question.
I only, the part that I questioned about had nothing to do with the donation. So I, my answer is no.
Yeah, I'm familiar with similar situations. But one of the things we can always do is consult with legal counsel, get a clarification on that.
I've done more than my share of that, Aaron, over the past six years.
I, I couldn't understand you, Richard. I'm sorry.
I said I've done more than my share. I know where I stand on this. I, I, I work very carefully in this project.
We'll seek clarification on the procedure, but I am familiar from multiple years of board meetings and so on down the line of related discussions and abstentions. Mr. Zulus?
My suggestion is if the members consult with town council about the difference and the distinction between extension and recusal.
That's exactly what I was talking about. Thank you.
Okay. That being achieved, we will now go on to committee appointments. Item number sixteen, Mr. Ziewinski.
So we have, it's a nine-member committee. We currently have six members. Everyone has been very active. Everyone's been great. Over the course of years, we've had people kind of drop off the committee. Dennis Cohane recently stepped down. I think his expectations for his, his participation were vastly exceeded and sort of kind of difficult to participate. And then we had Kathy Henderson, who was the treasurer of Milton Animal League, actually moved out of the Commonwealth. Longer a resident and didn't want to serve on the committee. And then we had a sort of a, 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 a third open spot that just hasn't been filled for, for a while. The committee is great. They're enthusiastic. They, they, they are very cooperative when I try to call a meeting. But it, it does become difficult to kind of get a quorum together when you've got six people out of a nine-person committee. And so we have had a, a number of residents that have been interested in this project. And also the, the, the charge of the committee actually requires there to be representation for the Milton Animal League. The president of the Animal League is on the committee, but she's actually kind of stepped away partially. She's on maternity leave. She's that baby. And so one of the, one of the new nominations, Miss Shay is, is, is a member of the Milton Animal League. And then also Susan Phillips actually just recently was elected to the board of the Milton Animal League. She's a, a resident that has expressed a great interest in this project, has a lot of really great experience. Attorney at Mince Levin in kind of real estate and development projects. And then Bill Ritchie, the director of Consolidated Facilities, who also serves on the committee, recommended Bob Mayhew, who's, is, is director of operations, also served as a member of the committee. Bob has extensive construction and construction management experience, would be a part of the team responsible for, for the care and kind of custody of this, you know, this building. And so Bill thought he would be a really great asset. And so we need three new members. We thought these were good members. And so the, 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 the committee has looked at, at, at these three folks and recommends that the Select Board nominate them so that we've got a full complement of members for the event.
Do we have a motion? These three appointments that have been recommended by town planner and director of community and development.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve Victoria Shay, Susan Phillips, and Robert Mayhew.
The Animal Shelter. Well, let's do a second phase. Any, now a second? Any discussion please? Mr. Zulus?
So, so I want to respect the interest and the intentions and the work of Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto to broaden committees and broaden the, the, the reach of our committees, while at the same time try to achieve the goal of populating a committee. And it seems like these are targeted, you know, representatives from the Animal League and the representative from the town's director of operations. So it seems like these are targeted and maybe a little different than some of our other appointments, or maybe not, maybe. And so, so may, I, I guess another alternative could be that we try to advertise and get the word out for the next, may, maybe for the next two weeks. So we don't compromise the efforts of the committee going forward to see how much, if there is any other interest. So I guess I, 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 I'd like to hear from Ms. Bradley or Ms. Musto if we can, if we can respect what they're trying to do and, and at the same time accomplish the goals here. And maybe it means we wait a couple of weeks. Maybe that doesn't compromise the efforts of the committee. Maybe it means we do some outreach in the next couple of weeks in order to accomplish those goals. So that's my, my, my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Aaron and Roxanne, you've had your appointments to the committee. Could you give us an update on where you might be now? And have you determined a chair? And do you have a calendar and so on down the line? So we can fit this. And then I'd like to go back to Tim to find out what his timing imperative is. So, Aaron?
I can report that Roxanne and I, excuse me, Member Musto and I were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow morning. And unfortunately, the clerk's office cannot attend that meeting after we've tried to reschedule it a couple of different times for tomorrow. So our meeting has been canceled, very unfortunately. We are now looking at trying to have it on the ninth of August, I believe, or the eighth of August. Those are the, that's the date that we just received. And I, I can make that meeting. It's, it's a shame that we're pushing this back another few weeks. I know Member Musto and I really want to get going on this and get this so that we feel that it's an equitable and open and transparent process that's happening. Obviously, if it's statutorily, folks that have to be on committees because of statutory reasons, we, I will personally vote in favor of that because it's in law. But moving forward, I, I, until we get this process out into the open, for me, I, I will be abstaining from any community member that's being appointed because I don't even know all the people that might have applied, nor do I know that all the circles in the, the town have been notified of this opening. So that's where I stand. I'm only speaking for myself, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Ms. Bradley, Ms. Musto, we are recognized. And then Mr. Wells?
Okay, I was going to say that Ms. Bradley is correct. We're not meeting next week because Suzanne is not available next week. Otherwise, we probably would have. So we have a tentative date for the following week on that Tuesday, which I believe is the ninth, as was stated earlier. And so I think it's important to make sure that we don't hold up the process, but that we allow enough time for people to, you know, get their applications. And if they're interested. So I did want to ask Tim when their next meeting. So I did want to ask Tim when their next meeting was going to be happening and so forth. When are they anticipating?
We, we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting, so I, I, I don't have an answer for that. I think we would probably, if we were probably meet kind of pursuant to the solicitation that goes out for the new O P M job. So I'd have to talk to procurement about exactly what that schedule would look like. To kind of look at who's coming in. And we probably want to have an advanced meeting about kind of, you know, how do we schedule interviews and kind of evaluations of those applications. So I don't have a date, but it would probably be within kind of the realm of that kind of month-long to six-week solicitation schedule. So, you know, two, two weeks is not, let, let me say this. You're the boss, so I'll do whatever, you know. And, and if, if you, you know, the, the, the committee has been operating with this membership. So it's been fine, but it's not been optimal, which is why I'm here. But I think, you know, you all need to kind of feel good about the appointments that you make and, and to kind of, you know, get this process off the ground. So I get it. So I'm not going to, you know, you know, push any harder than that. But I, I can, I can kind of look a little bit about that solicitation schedule and kind of talk to the chairs and figure out, you know, what they think that their meeting schedule should be, get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you're recognized. We have no disrespect to, to like two colleagues and their work and what they're trying to do, but this is a committee that by, by its charter calls for representation from the Milton Animal League, which Mr. Zelinski has prepared. Secondly, you have a recommendation for a department, the Director of Consolidated Facilities, who have the ultimate responsibility for this building, is every other building in town, recommending his operations director be appointed to that committee. His, his recommendation, his weight behind his expertise in this town. So I'm ready to vote, however it goes.
Any other, Ms. Musto?
Just a quick thing. So it sounds like, Richard, that these three positions are positions that are required, and from Tim's point, that, or two of them anyway.
I believe there's a reason why Mr. Ritchie is, is taking a recommendation at this point. There's a reason why he's doing it.
And I, I don't want to speak for Roxanne, but my impression, the comment is similar to some of what my friend of mine is, and that is, we're going through a change, transformation. We've been bringing added value with the new process, but at the same time, we have to have government continuing and getting the job done. And in this instance, it's, it's one that's been in the bands for a long time and is now trying to ramp up because there's been additional funding. And I know it takes time once people are appointed for them to make adjustments so that they can come aboard as well. It's not just the town side. It's what they have to do as well. So I just wanted to make that comment. Yes, Ms. Bradley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Tim, can you tell me which out of the three are required in our bylaws or in the way the committee is set up to be appointed? That are not townspeople that are just recommended?
So, so I, I want to be, I want to be clear that the, 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 the charge for the committee requires there to be at least one member of the Milton Animal League as a member of the, of, of the committee. So we technically do have one Animal League member. Alyssa Cook is the president of the Milton Animal League. Her participation in the committee has been pared back a little, you know, again, as she's, she's, she's taking care of a new baby. So the, none of these positions are, are per se required. But that representation from the Animal League has not been quite present in the, in the past, you know, couple of months. And so, you know, the Animal League wanted Ms. Shay to sort of be, kind of step forward to and again, you know, Mr. Mayhew, again, not required. Bill, Bill Ritchie is still on the committee. He is sort of required to be there. But again, you know, as a member of the committee, as the Director of Consolidated Facilities, he feels pretty strongly that Bob should be on the committee to kind of, you know, share that load of that responsibility. And also, at this stage, as we're sort of getting closer to the construction process, to have his expertise sort of for the committee and then to sort of gain that expertise of the building that he's going to be certain. You know, the, the actual sort of statutory requirement isn't there, but sort of the spirit of the requirement is there, if that makes sense.
So, Mr. Chair, if the, if the member who moved this and seconded it would be willing to amend it so that we take the one towns person off of the nomination and just nominate, I believe you said, Mr. Zelinski, Victoria Shay and Robert Mayhew were the two that were in statute but not in statute. I, I get what you're saying. If, if the, if the member would be amenable to that change and just nominating two people, I would be in favor of that.
Mover of the motion amenable?
Was this my, I can't even remember. Was this my motion?
Yeah.
And I am as well, the second agrees. So just to make sure you understand this correctly, we have a motion on the table to make appointments to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. The two appointees would be Victoria Shay and Robert Mayhew, if I understand correctly. Okay, seeing as that. I'll do the roll. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes, yeah.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I think you're rid of me. So I, I, I'm sorry all that took so long, but I think it was.
Oh. The Finance Subcommittee.
All right. Thanks a lot, everybody. Have a good night.
Mr. Zulus, thank you for your patience.
I make a motion to approve all of these, everything he has. I make a motion to approve.
Who said, who said I'm being patient?
Thank you for your documents today, by the way.
Just kidding. Mr. Chair, the, the Finance Committee met on July thirteenth, considered several applications for the Small Business Assistant Grant, grant. Several of them, we have, we've asked the town, for several of them, we have asked the town administrator to seek additional information. So we could substantiate the applications and, and survive an audit, which, which may come for these, these, these grants. And so that is in process with respect to the several that we have deferred. We voted to recommend that the board approve ARPA funding for small business assistance grants for four. And I think we're going to take them separately. The first one, the committee recommended appropriation of up to fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA funding for small business assistance grants for the Milton Times for adverti- advertising costs for small business, for a small business marketing campaign and printing and posting, postage to mail copies of the newspapers to all residents. That may, that may, that the cost, that cost may allow for one and perhaps two mailings to all residents in order to increase their business. I think it's fair to say that, that both Aaron and I thought that this was very creative, very innovative, and could be helpful, not only to Milton Times, but to other small businesses. And so, and so we voted to recommend it. I don't know if, Aaron, you had anything further to add to that?
I, I do not, Mr. Vice Chair. You hit the nail on the head.
Okay.
Let's beat the sick.
Was that the motion you just made, Michael? Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that the Select Board appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding for small business system grant times for advertising costs and small business marketing campaign.
Was that a second, Mr. Wells?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Thank you. And I just want to second the comment about its, its creativity, innovation, and its public good. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Mr. Wells, Mr. Zulus, back to you.
Second, the Milton Arts Center submitted an application for fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding for a small business assistance grant, twenty thousand of which was for a community arts program coordinator to help enhance the, the business and the offerings of the Milton Arts Center. Thirty thousand of which was for a canopy or a structure for, behind the art center in order to, to develop programs. The, the Finance Committee recommended, voted to recommend that the Select Board approve the twenty thousand dollars for the Community Arts Program Coordinator. I think it's fair to say, and Aaron, you can jump in, I think it's fair to say that our committee felt that, that at this time, it's premature for, for the board to approve the money for the, for the structure or the canopy. Because this is town property that we rent to them, and it deserves a greater conversation about, certainly, it's not part of the lease right now. So I think it deserves, I think we thought it deserves a greater conversation about whether there should be a canopy in that, in that backyard. So, Aaron, again, you can.
Yeah, and my only point would be that I suggested that they use the pergola that's going to be erected right across the street so that we can actually have folks start to use that green space that has taken us quite some time to get to. So, so that was my two cents on that piece.
So I'll move to recommend that we appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars from ARPA funding for a small business assistant grant to the Milton Arts Center for Community Arts Program Coordinator.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee recommended, voted to recommend that the Select Board appropriate up to three thousand dollars in a small business grant to direct access physical therapy for patient, patient cancellations. And the, the, the business had cancellations resulting from COVID. They sent us a letter detailing all of those cancellations. And then they came in today and supported it with the documentation showing those cancellations. And so, so I'll move to that the Select Board appropriate up to three thou- to three thousand dollars for a small business assistance grant to direct access physical therapy for the patient cancellation costs related to COVID nineteen. Again, Aaron, sorry, I jumped out.
No, I'm good. I'll second it. So, let's go.
Moving seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Back to you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finally, the, the Finance Committee recommends, recommends that the Select Board appropriate up to nineteen thousand two hundred and forty, nineteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars for a small business grant to Lisa Fisher Photography for various business development costs. This was a very well put together application. This is a sole proprietor photographer who, whose business was, was severely impaired by COVID. And, and as the application relates, there are various, the business development costs that, that she anticipates will help get the business back up on its feet. I think it's fair to say we thought this was a very well put together application, covered all the bases. So I'll move that the Select Board appropriate up to nineteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars for a small business grant to Lisa, small business assistant grant to Lisa Fisher Photography, various business development expenses.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus and Ms. Bradley. And I can credit that this is a very thorough application. It's a an exemplar, if you would. Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
That's it? That's what we have?
You have an acknowledgement?
Oh, yes. I guess that's undermined. I guess that's not financial. We did receive a, a, a very nice thank you from Sonia Dupree, from Dave Dupree Electrical Contractors. The Select Board appropriated fifty thousand dollars to that business to help that business get back on its feet. And they have already started providing the receipts showing the funds were deposited and dispersed and, and how they're going to use those to, to get that business back up on its feet. So it was a very nice letter to Ms. Fagan and to the members of the board, thanking the board for its assistance to keep the business afloat and go forward.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fagan, can we turn to you for the Town Administrator's Report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some good news to report. Our Assistant Town Engineer, Tim Inasco, he applied for a municipal small bridge program grant for fiscal twenty-three. We were notified last week that we were awarded Phase One, which is approximately up to a hundred thousand dollars of a grant for the design of the Elliott Street Bridge over Pine Tree Brook. That's the bridge beside Mackey's Baba Shop down in the village. And so good work by our Assistant Town Engineer. And stay tuned and, and see how that new bridge comes out. And then the second thing I wanted to talk to you about is, as we all know, we are, we lost our Finance Director a few months ago, and we have been, haven't filled that position yet. I did apply on the, our town website for a temporary person to kind of help me with year-end fiscal twenty-two year-end close fiscal twenty-three opening and to get us our paperwork in order for our August financial audit. The Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Amy Dexter, graciously applied for the position. And I have hired her to help me with the fiscal close, fiscal opening, and the paperwork for our audit in August, the preliminary audit in August. She will be doing this work outside of her normal business hours for her school position. And I, I just want to thank her a lot. I think this will help for a smooth transition in closing twenty-two and moving forward with twenty-three, because as you know, she used to be the Finance Director for the town. So I just wanted to update the board on that. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Very much appreciated. Chair's Report. Notice of the discussion relative to a potential meeting. There will be a meeting, actually, it shouldn't be now identified as potential, that the Chair of the Planning Board and I are going to have on August third exploratory, it goes back to a conversation that I mentioned at an earlier meeting that she and I had had at an event at Grange Field. And I would like to ask if there are topics that any members of the board might have that would be suitable for a dialogue preparation between the Select Board and the Planning Board, if you could please submit those to Anne Marie in advance of August third, and they will be on the docket for the discussion. There's a request for information relative to an update on the East Milton Deck. I'm there every day. The, the thing that makes my heartbeat a little better is the synchronization of the lights. Nothing that has been line awaited, and it is absolutely from this one person's perspective dynamic. Boulevard Street is now permanently in one-way. Much of the mucking is being wrapped up directly for the, the pavement. And those traffic markings should be done, I guess, by the end of this week, I would guess. And then the interior of the park is the next focus. There is an update posted by Mass Todd every two weeks on his website. I would like to have us go to item twenty-one, which is future dates and agenda items. The dates we have, we discussed already.
Mr. Chair, just to point out before we leave East Milton, I want to give a shout out to McKay Construction. Most people have no idea that this happened, but last week when they paved all night, both nights.
Yes.
McKay Construction went into Abbey Park and the restaurants, gave every waitress working that a hundred dollar tip because that paving project essentially shut that business down for those two nights. And that was above and beyond anything that they ever had to do. It was, was, most people would never even know that, but I happened to learn that they did this. And it was a very, very, a nice move. I don't think I've ever seen a contractor do anything like that in this town.
That's incredible. Thank you. That's incredible. Thank you for sharing that, Richard. And, um, something all of us can remember when we meet Vance and his colleagues, right? Uh, not, uh, to belabor the time, but going to Agenda Item 21. Future Agenda Dates, August 10, August 23rd. Tuesday, September 6th is primary election day. And the Town Clerk informs me that, um, we cannot meet on an election day, so we have to find another, uh, date that week. I'm sorry, Mr. Zulus, did I overlook you?
Just a quick question. Did we want to try to meet next week on the contract, uh, for the new town administrator? That would probably be an executive session, uh, item.
I think an update on that, even if it's a brief meeting, would be, um, certainly in order for the earlier conversation. Do you have some dates to suggest? We need a little bit of elbow room.
I, I, I think for me, Wednesday night works. I don't know if that works for anyone else.
Okay, so that would be the 3rd of August, right? Wednesday, the 3rd of August?
Mm-hmm. Would that, would that be the only agenda item?
At this time, that's the case. If something came out of the woodwork that really needed attention, we could be backed it on to that meeting, but, um, we don't know at this time. Usually we try to focus on, um, a particular item. This is one of importance.
Right.
So I'd like to try and, I continue that work. And Mike, this is most likely to be an executive session, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Would we have enough information by then, do you think?
That's, that's would, uh, we could post the meeting. We can always, um, cancel the meeting if we don't need to hold it. But if we do need to have it, we don't have it posted, then probably. So that's the rationale behind, uh, moving in this direction that Mike has advised. Aaron?
Um, Mr. Chair, can we make this a Zoom meeting as I will be driving home and will not be back at my home until probably 7:05, 7:10, if the traffic's bad?
There's no reason why we can't with the extension that, uh, the Governor has signed.
Thank you.
So Anne Marie and Lynn, we'll schedule for seven o'clock. Would that be acceptable as a time for Wednesday, August 3?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And then we have to find an alternative date for September the 6th.
Mr. Chair, if I may, you guys should make the date whenever you want. Um, I can only do Tuesdays, so I will miss a meeting, and that's totally fine. I can catch up. So please feel free to make it whenever y'all can.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Bradley. That's very generous of you. Any suggestions on an, an alternative date that week? Looking at your account, respective calendars, uh.
Want to do it Wednesday, just to get it done? You want to do it Wednesday, just to get it done?
The 7th?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no objection, why don't we schedule that for Wednesday, September 7? While we're on this topic, um, with respect to elections and, um, meeting dates, we have national elections coming up. And that, uh, series of elections will impact, uh, scheduling the fall, uh, town meeting. And early conversations with the Town Clerk, uh, suggesting late November, early December. So I've, uh, invited, uh, Sue Galvin, Town Clerk, to meet with us on August 10 to give an explanation of the process, the scheduling, and recommendations for our consideration. And then I have a last date that's identified as September 20th. Now, I think at that next meeting, we can start to go to updates from there. For future agenda items, um, I've identified several here, um, so we can move them and avoid organizational drift. We want to wrap up the Milton Arts Center. We have the Milton Sign Car, Over Meeting Lodge Training, Equity and Justice Committee that we need to be working on. And, um, I added the deposit river report card, and, um, you may not have seen that, but, uh, two of our waterways in Milton received low grades, very low grades compared with speaking Pine Tree Brook, a major waterway in the town of Milton with a grade of C minus. And Unquity Brook, uh, one of only two waterways in the entire deposit, uh, watershed to receive a, receive a grade of F, the other one being a meta book in, um, nowhere. So what I'd like to, uh, suggest is the possibility of a meeting that would, uh, have a dialogue about this involving Ian Cook of the Deposit Watershed River Watershed Association, uh, Chair of our Conservation Commission, BPW Chair, and, and the other appropriate, uh, party. If that's agreeable to you, and that's something we could do in the downtime. Um, and, and thinking of that, if there's a way in which we can do mitigation or remediation, um, want to consider whether or not that's something that can be done with the ARPA funding that we have. Um, remaining, something to explore. Anything else that anybody else might have?
Motion or adjourn?
Here we are. Um, Mr. Zulus's hand was raised just before the motion, Mr. Wells.
Just, just in terms of agenda items, seems to me we need to include, um, the Milton Street Station to see whether we intend to do anything about that.
The what?
The Milton Street MBTA, the, the Milton, uh, Adam Street MBTA Station.
Oh, yes, yeah.
See whether we intend to do anything about that.
I, I made a note for that, Mr. Zulus, for the, uh, meeting of, uh, August 10. And maybe some people will come up beforehand. We will not abandon your interest. It's a very important issue. So, Mr. Wells, back to you.
I made my motion.
I seconded it.
It's been seconded, Ms. Busta. Mr. Zulus?
I have to draw it back on the deck here.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busta?
Yes.
And just the Doyle, yes. Okay, Richard, anchors away.
I'll see you after. I'll see you later. I'll call you tomorrow if I talk to Dr. Stokely.
Thank you, everybody. Much territory, one territory covered tonight. Most appreciated.
Good night.